Welcome to the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the City Council of the City of Louisville. Welcome to all of you who are here and online. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Hafner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern. Present. Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. Join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Five. The Republic of Louisiana is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
I.
The opposed? Okay. It is time now for public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. I probably ought to mention that I'm gonna pull one item off the consent agenda if somebody was planning to speak about it. Handle it later. We haven't done that yet. We still have to take a vote on that. But I wanted to provide that information in the event somebody thought that we weren't gonna discuss it and we may be discussing it. That is item five C. So at any rate, public comment is a time where folks can get up to the podium and say their name and talk about an item of business they're interested in talking about for up to three minutes and up to six if you can point to somebody in the room or online who is willing to cede their time to you. You don't have to talk for the full three to six minutes. You're welcome to ditto other people if you choose to. But that is there for you. We ask folks not to clap or boo, stand up and cheer, mostly because it tends to intimidate folks who might otherwise maybe be relative newcomers to this kind of meeting and we don't want to discourage anybody from speaking. We'd rather get everybody's comment who wants to make. So with that in mind, your member of the public, I guess, did you fill out a card? Just so, because you're reminding me, if you're interested in making public comment, please fill out a card. They're right outside the room and give them to the clerk at the very end of the dais and she'll call your name out when it's time. Make sure when you get to the podium that you speak or just say your name and the city that you're from. You don't have to give the, you don't have to give your address.
So my question is a procedural one because I'm not quite clear from the explanation. I think one would be helpful. Can we clarify what C is for folks? And then also, do you want them to speak now if they are going to speak on that? Or should they wait? Or can they speak both times?
Very good questions. What, and all of this is just, the reason I'm being provisional is because we haven't taken a vote. I'm just telling you what I intend to do. I'm going to ask the council to approve taking one of the consent items and putting it on the regular agenda. That item is five C, parks, recreation and open space, long range plan and trails, master plan award. And if we do that, it will be on the agenda. So it won't be appropriate right now to make comments on it. Yeah. So now is not the time, I think, to make those comments on that agenda item. There will likely be time later to do that. And the only reason I'm saying likely is because other council members have not yet approved it. And if we don't, what I'm gonna do is if we don't approve moving that, then I'll give people time to address it later. I think that's only fair. Now are we, does that help?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to clarification. Okay. I didn't mean for that to be so confusing. Are we ready for public comment? Do we have anybody who would like to make public comment? The answer is emphatic yes.
First up is Helmut Listinsky, followed by Adlin.
Wow. I didn't think I'd be first, but here goes. I want to address the, the potential noise issue with the potential new pickleball courts, outdoor pickleball courts. And I hope City Council would reconsider. First of all, getting rid of the inline skating park, which is a treasure that Louisville has and a lot of people use, I think is short sighted. And then replacing it by pickleball courts that are going to create a lot of noise is going to be a problem. I represent some of the people that are along the open space behind the rec center. And just on Sunday, I was in my backyard and I all of a sudden heard a, and there were two people set up a net. It's quite a distance, but it was just two people and it was a constant clicking sound back and forth. And if there's five courts, you can multiply that by 20 people because likely they're going to be playing doubles. And the sound is just going to be terrible, you know, throughout 10 months out of the year from potentially sunrise to sunset. And I think it's short sighted to put in outdoor pickleball courts in a residential area. There's, there's a lawsuit going on in Lone Tree against Parks and Rec because of noise. There's a moratorium and centennial going on because of pickleball noise. Denver has removed a few pickleball courts because of noise. And I just hope that City Council will listen and, and not, I know it's already been approved, but you guys can change that. Just think about if it was next to your house and you had that constant noise. And I don't know if you've, if you have really discussed that, you know, amongst everyone here with the noise issue. But getting back to the inline skating rink, I think that there's no way that rink should go away because people use it. My son learned how to play hockey on that rink and it's a treasure that Louisville has. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Adlin, followed by Owen Cheesebro.
Hi, I'm Adlin. I've been living in Louisville for my whole life and I think the rink is a great multipurpose space for kids like me to have fun, try new things and get exercise. I also think keeping the rink is a great use of space and money. And I think that kids should be able to use the rink as a resource and not have to drive far. I hope you all reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and thank you for coming forward. That's a very brave thing to do.
Next up is Owen Cheesebro, followed by Kyle Cheesebro.
Hi, my name is Owen Cheesebro and I play. Hi, my name is Owen. And I'm a Louisville resident. I've been playing, well, I play hockey for the Lafayette, like a model of hockey club. I think we should keep the rink because it's a big help for the, for hockey players. The rink is a game changer for young hockey players like me. Uh, there's enough space at the rink for pickleballers and hockey players are practicing their skills. Uh, the facility is valuable place for lots of people to play and practice sports. Like learning bikes, learning to ride bikes, learning to skateboard, pickleball, street hockey, roller skating and more sports. Thank you for listening to my speech.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Kyle Cheesebro, followed by Jenny Zipul.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Cheesebro. I'm a Louisville resident. I've lived here since 2019 and I live in war two. I'm concerned about the planned inline rink conversion project, which will eliminate numerous different user groups from the existing facility in favor of the specific and single use of pickleball. I believe the project should be placed on hold and the shared use be continued until an active public involvement process has been completed and until additional effort is invested in identifying alternative facilities that could fulfill the needs of the diverse user groups that currently enjoy the existing facility. Those include hockey, roller hockey, young bike riders, learning to ride, novice skateboarders who are progressing their skills and many more. At the time that the City Council approved the CIP funding request, the rec advisory board was pursuing two potential alternative locations for inline skating and stick and puck practice. While I appreciate their early efforts, city staff have recently acknowledged that each of those options will not work for inline skating, which means that if this project moves forward as planned, skating and inline hockey users would be left with no viable alternative. Additionally, the concepts previously explored by the board represent a significant downgrade from the existing facility. The public involvement process for this project appears to have been rather passive until after the CIP was approved by the City Council, which is when the project plans were first announced on social media. The dialogue within social media and at last night's rec advisory board meeting has been full of many valuable perspectives. It's evident that many inline rink users still want the opportunity to have their voices heard. The city's public involvement policy states that city staff and advisory boards are responsible for ensuring that decisions and recommendations reflect the needs and desires of the community as a whole and also for ensuring that no participant or group is marginalized or ignored. My request is for the City Council to embrace this topic as part of the agenda for a future meeting and as soon as practical at embrace this topic as part of the agenda for a future meeting as soon as practical and to listen to the input from the various user groups that have not been heard from and to consider halting this project until a more thorough planning and public involvement process is completed by the Recreation Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Next up is Jenny Zipul and followed by Ryan Peterson.
Hi, my name is Jenny Zerl and I've lived in Louisville for 24 years now. And I, it's a hard act to follow, so I'll just say ditto to a lot of what I heard prior to me and also last night at the Recreation Board meeting. But a couple of points I do want to make. I, I live behind that area and that holds a hockey rink in the rec center and I have for years. And I, I walk around there a lot with my dog and I see already the multi-use. Many times people are playing hockey and playing pickleball at the same time or kids are learning to skate or ride their bikes in a safe space. And I feel like there, people are already playing pickleball there. Some people leave their nets and they'll have two or three games going at a time. And then they can be pulled aside and people can still play hockey and use other things. So this would actually, I feel like save money to Louisville to use in other spaces because people are already playing pickleball. Then also the new pickleball courts, indoor courts that are coming in by Safeway want to support our new business coming into, that are being brought into Louisville. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Next up is Ryan Peterson, followed by Brian Ball.
I may spill over three minutes a little bit, so George back there was kind enough to give me his three minutes. My name is Ryan Peterson, a Louisville resident since oh five. I oppose the planned destruction of the existing multi-use hockey and skate rink to convert this area to a single-use pickleball facility. It was inspiring to attend the rec advisory meeting last night, hearing from approximately 15 passionate teens and parents who use this rink for many different activities, pleading to keep this rink as a multi-use space, while only one person showed up to speak in favor of the proposed project. I believe that most people in this community, including avid pickleball players, will decide not to support the planned demo of this rink after hearing and considering the negative impact this will have on their friends, neighbors and the many kids who benefit from this existing space. Major changes to our rec center should involve thorough community feedback. A survey like the one done before the rec center remodel would ensure that everyone's opinion is heard. Social media posts on the OO Facebook pages this week show tremendous opposition to this planned destruction of the rink. With all the technology available, I can't understand why the rec board would not conduct thorough community outreach before pushing this project through City Council. As a father and a skateboarder, I use the skate park and the rink in tandem, as do most other skaters. The skate park lacks any beginner areas, making the rink essential for building skills safely before advancing to the skate park. They really do go hand in hand. I've taught many kids and adults to skate on this rink and Square State Skates teaches programs hosted by the rec center, professional lessons and camps for our kids on this rink. Streets, sidewalks are not ideal places to learn these types of sports and especially learning the basics of these sports, including hockey, because of the rough surfaces and inherent traffic dangers. Contrary to claims that the rink is always empty, it's simply not true. I often cannot skate on the rink because it's occupied by hockey games, pickleball games and other activities, which is great. It's a space that our diverse community shares and respects and respects each other while they're doing it. The rink's concrete surface is adequate for most people wanting to play or learn pickleball and I often see pickleball played on one half while a parent practices hockey with their kid on the other half. If the space is seen as underutilized, then perhaps the rec center should offer more options such as youth hockey programs, footsall soccer, outdoor yoga or fitness classes. The options are really limitless, unlike the proposed pickleball courts, which is gonna be for only one single use. Pickleball courts in Boulder County and surrounding communities sit empty if there's any moderate amount of wind or chill temperatures, which is very common weather in Colorado. But skaters and hockey players use this rink in Louisville year round. This is simply a take. Take away a versatile space that serves the diverse interests of kids and families and give it to the pickleball crowd who already have many free courts available throughout Boulder County. Twenty-two new courts coming to our newest local business, Relish. Many opportunities to play inside our very rec center and five courts on this rink that we're talking about itself. So I asked the City Council to pause the project to conduct a more thorough resident survey and additional due diligence before taking this rare gem away from our community. And then lastly, for anyone on this council or in the public who's listening to this, who is just set on taking this space away and converting it to pickleball only, but also doesn't like taking away from their neighbors, friends and families, then I would ask you at the very least, demand that the project be done in tandem with a proper relocation of the rink. Because if a new rink is not planned and funded alongside the pickleball project, it will never happen. And again, you've just taken a rare gem away from our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
Next up is Brian Ball, followed by Steven. I'm not even gonna try that one.
Thank you all for your time. I'm Brian Ball and I'm owner of Square State Skate and we've been contracted with the City of Louisville to do skateboard programs for the last 15 years. We utilize the, the rink for instruction. I heard several people use the term learners. The, the space is fantastic for teaching skateboarding. If you think about the Louisville skate park, all of the obstacles and the ramps, they're at least three to four feet high. And for all of these beginners, that's already head high. We always teach the kids, we don't start at the top and work our way down. We start at the bottom and work our way up. That's what progression looks like. And the Louisville skate park, as good as it is, does not allow for that kind of progression. So we do utilize the hockey rink for instruction. That's not just for the safety of the kids that we're teaching, but also for the other community members that want to be using the skate park. Learning on a skateboard is often a little bit sloppy. There's going to be loose equipment. There are going to be kids that are falling down. So it's much safer to have that happen in another space rather than indoor, or sorry, rather than in the skate park. So, um, sorry, I'm just referring to my notes here. But essentially removing that space would be removing the opportunity for us to conduct programs the way that we do. So as with many others, I'm just asking that the council reconsider taking that space away from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Next up is Steven, followed by Susan Kennedy.
Steven, you want to try to come up here last?
Yes, I, I think I can do it. It's Steven Joyelli, a resident of Louisville and I'm a father and I'm also a licensed psychologist and in Boulder County. And so I have a nine-year-old daughter. She's an avid ice skater and hockey player and she's devastated by the idea of the rink being taken away and not having a place to play. But I, but I really want to just add, I echo a lot of the concerns here, but as a, as a mental health professional, I also just want to add like, I mean, we're, I'm sure many of you are well aware, we're in, the, the state of youth mental health is in a crisis right now. We have record numbers of depression, suicide, anxiety. And as a parent, like that's terrifying to raise a kid right now. Like our current state of existential, everything is just uncertain and worrisome. And, you know, some of the leading experts in the field, sociologists, psychologists, when they are trying to tackle this problem, you know, we look at devices and social media and all these issues. And some of the remedies are get your kid outside, get your kid face to face with other kids and have them do free play. Free play meaning not a plastic playground, not that that's bad in and of itself, but a place to be able to be creative, to have a blank canvas. And that is what the role of rink is. It's for everything. It can be whatever. And so the idea that in the midst of this crisis, we would take something away from our kids is kind of insane to me. I don't think that anybody's deliberately doing that, but I think that like, if I were to zoom out and think of this point in time, like why we would prioritize the interests of predominantly adults who want to play pickleball over a space that kids enjoy, a space that kids need to be able to play outside and be creative and mess around with their friends, I think is just, like, it's, it's a huge issue that needs to be considered on that level. And I mean, when I was telling my daughter about the news, one of the things she said is like, why, why can't the adults share? And I said, I don't know. I don't have a good answer. Like the kids are being asked to share, that wasn't ever really used for pickleball. They, we seem to be able to make, make it work thus far, but why now is it getting taken away with no, no plans for any kind of free play replacement? Thank you.
Thank you, Steven.
Susan Kennedy, followed by Jan Willem and Brian Copo.
Close, close.
Hello, I'm, I'm Susan Kennedy. I've been in Louisville 19 years. I have two kids, 18-year-old and a 15-year-old. And they were at the, the meeting at the rec center last night. I wish that they could be here to speak again, but one of them is actually teaching swimming lessons currently at the rec center and the other is actually at a hockey practice. So I have a, both kids learn to skateboard inside that rink. My son is a passionate hockey player. And so especially in the off season, that is the place he goes to work on his skills. He, it's a really vital place. Like last night, I feel like I learned some things that I didn't even put the connection to, but that importance of having that rink available to beginner skaters so that they can eventually progress to the skate park, I think is really an important thing to think about. In general, like hockey, ice hockey is expensive for my son to go be on ice to practice his skills for an hour at a like drop-in, stick and puck, it's a $15 a session. So that's not something that we can afford on a daily basis on top of other, other things. So the, the inline rink has been a place for him where he can go even at night when he's done homework. In the summer, he'll go up there and he spends a lot of time practicing and using that space. I think as many people have said, we, many people have shared that space at the same time. My son has come home and said, oh yeah, I helped people set up the pickleball courts. And then, and, and it feels like it's been a nice marriage. So I do question, is it necessary to spend the money? And I think the other, the other thing I would request is if you do want to move forward with pickleball facilities somewhere in Louisville, maybe this is not actually the right space. Because if, if you remove the inline and put it somewhere else, then you're losing that pairing between the skate park and the rink. So I questioned, there is development, there's a lot of concrete along the McCaslin Boulevard. Is there an opportunity somewhere else to consider establishing pickleball courts? And maybe it just, it was an idea, maybe it's just not the right idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Last up for this will be Cam.
Yeah, it's Jan Willem de Brunkops, or if you're in the Netherlands, Jan Willem de Brankops. Sorry, the name is very confusing. So Barbara, I don't have three things, I have five things. So that's just a little inside joke there. I was at the meeting last night at the rec center. It was awesome. They're like, the amount of, the number of kids that stood up and spoke their, their hearts out. I'm gonna steal a couple of things that they'd mentioned. I'm gonna read from some notes so I don't miss anything, but my big takeaway is the whole idea of multi-use versus single use. We probably came up with close to a dozen things that we could do with the, you know, the current rink as opposed to probably more single use for the pickleball space. So I think, you know, that's an idea. The idea of like, the, the rink is potentially being underused at the moment. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but I think the rec center and maybe the City of Louisville could easily have lots of opportunities for things to go on there. You know, I grew up playing soccer, basketball. You know, you could easily have a, like a little soccer game going on. There was mention of a family last night that doesn't have any access to roller hockey in the area. They literally have to drive down to Colorado Springs and there's a lot of kids that are playing over the sports stable, the YMCA. So I'm sure there's a lot of hockey kids. You could easily set up a league, you know, using the rink. Sure, you could rent it out to teams. You know, I coach soccer. I, I could easily see soccer teams using that space as well. I've lived in three different states, traveled, you know, in, around the US, around the world. Don't know if I've ever actually seen a rink like this, you know, roller, roller skating, roller hockey rink. I think it's a super cool thing to have in Louisville. And as at least one of the other speakers mentioned, it is, ice time is very expensive, right? So a lot of what they were talking about last night at the rec center, a lot of the kids who stood up said, a lot of them practiced during the summer. They practiced their shooting, they practiced their skills. So I think the whole idea of like that access to an inexpensive place to practice. Real quick, shout out to Relish, a new business coming in. We may be potentially taking away from that business. I know Louisville, I've sat in on some of these meetings in the past where, you know, there's restaurants leaving, there's, you know, businesses leaving. So why not help that, you know, local business as much as we can? And by potentially putting courts just around the corner, maybe we're, we're hurting, you know, that business. Last but not least, there was a cute little kid yesterday that said, they didn't understand because pickleball players are probably going to have the ability to drive to a court, whereas kids who are trying to access it, maybe walking, maybe biking to their local community couldn't. So they said, well, the pickleball players could, you know, could drive there and we might be able, we might be stealing a space away from those kids who, you know, don't have that same potential. Well, thank you all so much for your time. Also good to see you, Caleb.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Cam.
Hi, I'm Cam Cowish. I'm just gonna pile on with what everybody said. I'm a local resident who uses the rink frequently to play roller hockey. It's a very important institution in Boulder County as the only concrete rink available. Formally, it's scheduled and used twice weekly for roller hockey games and by other playing hockey outside of our scheduled drop-ins. It's also used by people and children to learn how to practice to rollerblade, roller skate and skateboard. Additionally, it's a terrific flat surface that many others use for like learning how to ride bikes, uh, far away from heavy road traffic. And I think that's critical. Uh, it's also used by soccer players in some evenings and even used by pickleball players already. Uh, and of all the groups mentioned above, they share the space without issue. It's really a unique place that provides for several communities of people. Uh, there are some that say that pickleball is a fast-growing sport and that it's starting to be offered at the high school. Uh, well, hockey has also been a staple sport in this community and future generations of players get their start and practice at rinks like ours. Uh, pickleball surged post-COVID, but hockey has maintained a steady growth year after year, growing steadily by twenty percent across the board and thirty percent for girls. Participation in team sports like hockey lead to future scholarship opportunities stemming from skills learned at rinks just like this. Despite new businesses sprouting up and promoting pickleball courts, some complain saying that it will cost them money to play pickleball. But hockey is hugely expensive to play in comparison and very cost prohibitive for people that are new or aspiring to the sport. Uh, having a rink where skills can be honed for free is really a big deal for families from all walks of life and will significantly contribute to future growth of hockey in Colorado. Lastly, removing the rink will have a huge impact on several groups in this community, but also the pickleball community. There are already nets and lines drawn on the rink for people to play. Removing this area to build permanent courts instead of building them somewhere else will actually reduce the overall number of courts available to members of the community and seems counterproductive to the end goals of the rec board. Uh, please consider that when, uh, and changing course for building the court somewhere else and leave the hockey rink for all of our communities to enjoy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Cam. Okay, is there anybody online who's, okay? Um, thank you very much and appreciate your following the guidelines that I set out earlier. Um, all right. Next, and one of the things that's uh just to be clear, sometimes people wonder whether we're listening. I'm tapping away, uh, taking notes and others are too. Uh, but we can't address the comments tonight because it's not on the agenda. That doesn't mean they're not important. Um, they really are. And I appreciate, and we all appreciate your coming out tonight and speaking your mind. That's why we have this and uh we'll be thinking about those comments. So anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next part of the agenda is consent agenda. As I mentioned before, I'll go ahead and make a motion uh which is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item five B. Excuse me, which is Parks Recreation Open Space Long Range Plan and Trails Master Plan Award. Um, which I would like to take off the consent agenda and move it to item eight G, which would be the end of the agenda for tonight. So can I get a second?
Second.
All, any comment? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next is council informational comments and committee reports. Right. Seeing none, um, we'll move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to speak a little bit tonight. After approximately a year and a half with the city, I am speaking to you tonight for my last meeting as your interim city manager. About nine months ago, I became your interim city manager. And while this was not anticipated, I have appreciated the opportunity and am thankful to the council, the community and the staff whose support has been invaluable and so greatly appreciated. I am proud of where Louisville is today and I have been honored to serve. And at our next city council meeting, we will welcome our new city manager, Diana Langley. And I will look forward to continue serving the community as the deputy city manager. But before we move on to the next meeting, we need to say goodbye to our own Meredith Muth, who's also serving in her last council meeting tonight. Meredith has been here for twenty-seven years in four roles and in five desks. She predates email for the city of Louisville, the library and the recreation center add-on. She's been through about a hundred open government trainings, three phone systems, three email addresses. She served four city managers, three interims, two attorneys, six mayors, thirty council members, and helped about six hundred board and commission member appointments. She's been here through three parking studies, two special elections, two hailstorms, one flood, one pandemic and one fire. And that's not even anything to say of her contributions to the city. We estimate that she's been through a hu- thousand council meetings, just a few nights here with us, Tuesday nights. It's hard to imagine a Louisville without Meredith Muth, and I hope you will all join me in thanking her for her service. Personally, I'm not sure I could have made the last nine months without you, Meredith. You will be missed. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege. Uh, I'll, I'll wait on Meredith because I have certain upset feelings to express about her departure. Um, uh, but in all seriousness, um, Samma came to us and certainly did not expect to be um receiving a battlefield promotion so um so quickly into uh her time as deputy city manager. Um, we were very fortunate to get her as deputy city manager. Um, and um, we on council at that time and since have had the confidence that I think she has earned and um and really helped us to uh feel good about the decision that we made to ask her to be our, our interim. I, I think one of the things that um uh is, is important to remember is that even if you're in interim, you end up doing plenty of the kinds of keeping watch over, plenty of the kinds of tasks that you used to do in your regular or former position. Um, it's just natural because you know more about it than um perhaps anybody taking over. Uh, but um, I, for one, really appreciate the uh care and the diligence, uh, the long hours and um the wisdom that you've shown in the time that you've been in this position. Um, because it's certainly, I, I think you would say uh kind of kicking you up to a position that perhaps you, you didn't think you would get, at least at this point in your career. So we appreciate that. I, I suspect you're probably gonna be somewhat relieved to have uh a full-time city manager here. We're excited about that, not because you're leaving, but because uh frankly, we'll get a good mentor um in place. And we've got somebody who, who has uh uh had those kinds of experiences for many, many years. But you've done a really wonderful job. And so I think we clapped before for Meredith, but we want to clap for you too. So thank you. On Meredith, I, I'm the person who's, who's been on council or this spot the longest. So that's why I want to say something. I'll give opportunities, I think, in this to, for other people to take the same privilege. Um, I remember um Meredith from when I was a young child. It's not true, but she was a fairly um junior, I think, assistant deputy? When did, what did you take when you were first aboard?
I believe my first title was community facilitator.
Um, and facilitate you did. But um, that def- definition or summary of your job sounds like somebody's definition of um, a tough job. And we really appreciate what you've done over the years. What you're seeing is somebody um who's got so much institutional knowledge. You're not going to be that far away. We know that. And you've said that you're willing to field calls at least on a irregular basis. Um, I, in some ways, don't know how we'll uh do without you because you're not just our deputy interim or our interim deputy city manager, but uh clerk. And you've done so many things uh and kept us all in line um in the way that only somebody who's seen as much um action as you have over the years can do. So um, I, I think a number of us have pressured you to stay. And uh, I know that, that uh this opportunity that you get, she's going to be going to Erie. Um, and it's going to be a really wonderful position and um they're lucky to have you. I mean, she, this is only going to be her second, I think, second position since you got your graduate degree. Maybe it's a little bit more. Um, and that's just tremendous. So uh, we've get, we've gotten our, our money's worth and our time's worth out of you and really appreciate what you've done. I'll leave it to somebody else if they want to add something to that. Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, actually, I wanted to just quote Harry Potter in saying, there's no Hogwarts without Hagrid, there's no Louisville without Meredith. And you will be very missed. Thank you for being here and serving and making it so much easier to help the city because you're there to help all of us.
Thanks. Yeah, you guys kind of making it hard having two things at the same time. Samma, thank you so much for, for everything you've done and so excited that um, you know, you're, you're gonna be here next week as well. Um, glad you got a few days off. I made sure I texted her every day just to make sure she's enjoying her time away. And yeah, she was very responsive. Um, you're amazing and it's been great to work with you and we, we really appreciate everything you've done for us. Um, and excited that you get to, to remain and we'll have lots, lots more conversations. Um, Meredith, you are such a wonderful presence in this building. Um, when I knew nothing about city government and I would come into this building to get information, like, how do I run for council? What, what do I need to do? Like, you were always so kind and so uh knowledgeable, but also generous with your time and your explanations. And you were just, um, you, you held your expertise in a way that was very available to everybody. And I'm sure you did that with all your colleagues as well over all these years. But um, you were, you were the person I sought out in this building because I knew you'd be helpful. And I knew you'd know the answers and I knew you would be nice to me when I was so ignorant. Um, and so I, I really appreciate it and want you to know that you are like the first impression I ever had of the city of Louisville was, was you. Um, and I really will miss you because it is very, very hard to, to lose you um in this role. And, and we appreciate you so much and we're so excited for you. And we know this is a great opportunity and that you're not leaving out of uh bitterness or anger at me. It wasn't me, I swear. Um, a little bit, but it wasn't, that wasn't the whole thing. Um, so we're just, we're so excited for you. And I think it is a huge compliment to have, you know, people that know what they're doing sad that you're leaving. And that, that is a huge compliment to you. Um, and um, and that's, that, that's all I have. But thanks for all of my time with you.
Yep, Councilmember Fagie.
Uh, I'll just add my thanks and appreciation and acknowledgement of your years of experience and wisdom and helpfulness. And it began for me well before I was on council. In other, any time I had any kind of city issue, you were the one that I would go to because you knew the answer. As Caleb said, you were very forthright. You knew it and you were happy to pass that information on and help whoever needed help. So I would also like to thank you for your twenty-seven years of making my life simpler and a lot of other people as well. And also thank Samma for her years of stepping up. And I think because of all that you've done as interim city manager, you're going to be indispensable in bringing in our new city manager because you also have the history and the procedures down and be easy to pass it on to the next person. So thank you very much to both of you. I'm gonna miss you, Meredith.
Okay, thanks. Um, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll start with Samma. Uh, your, your leadership as interim city manager greatly appreciated and remarkable. I believe you are exactly what we needed during this time of transition and uncertainty. And I'm so grateful for that. And I look forward to continuing our work together um with the new city manager and you partnering with her to continue to make Louisville a great place to live. And Meredith, I very much appreciate your dedication as a public servant. Um, I looked to you and continue to look to you um for guidance and expertise. And you're not only a public servant who is phenomenal at her job, but you do it with such grace and kindness and humanity. Even when others don't show up that way, you still practice that. And I think it's remarkable and you inspire me to do that every single day. So thank you and I'm excited to see you in your new role. Um, good luck with that.
Councilmember Cooperman.
So I think um Meredith is probably the staff member that I've, who I've interacted the most with, I think, um, over the past five years that I've lived in Louisville. Um, and you know, although I've only been on council for a fairly short time, um, I feel like I interacted a lot with Meredith before that, you know, whether it was something having to do with being on a board or filing election papers, um, or an initiative, um, or you know, just asking for the advanced agenda um, or just handing off a comment card. And like some of my fellow council members said, like, I, I learned that the person to ask if I had a question was Meredith. Because not only did she usually know the answer, uh, but she was also extremely responsive. And so uh, it's, it's been a pleasure. And I, I just wanted to share one story, kind of illustrate, I was telling Councilmember Kern about this the other, the other day. So before I was on council, um, and I guess shortly after our city manager had left, um, I came into the city, I can't remember what, the, the city hall for some reason, and I was heading to your office. Um, and it was, the lights were out and no one was in there. And I hadn't realized that you were transitioning to be the deputy. Um, and I was just thinking like, what? Meredith is leaving too? And I was, I was really concerned, but then I figured out what was going on and uh it was okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember.
I'll go last. I agree with everyone. Um, Meredith, like, like many others have expressed, you're the first person I really met in the city and it's been smooth sailing ever since. Uh, I hope you will tell us in which closets the skeletons are located and, you know, how many in what state uh before you leave. I think you may be the only person who knows the location of all of them. Samma, you, you came to us in a, in a difficult time and I think you're paying us a tremendous compliment by staying um a- and continuing on as deputy. And we're so lucky to have you and look forward to continuing to have you into the indefinite future, or at least the next twenty-seven years. Thank you both so much.
Thanks. Okay, we're done with the city manager's report. Uh, now to the regular business. Uh, first, we have ordinance number eighteen ninety-two, series twenty-two-five, and ordinance pending title seventeen and title three. title three of the Louisville municipal code concerning the regulation of accessory dwelling units in the city of Louisville, first reading. And this is to set the public hearing for April 15th, 2025. Whenever we're doing an ordinance, we always do a first reading. It's not to have a presentation or, or a discussion. It's just simply to set that public hearing so everybody knows that's coming. Do we have?
Yeah, I will move the passing of, or sorry, the setting of the public hearing for ordinance number 1892.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, actually, the next ordinance is ordinance number 1893, series 2025, and ordinance amending title 17 of the Louisville municipal code to modify the definition of family. This is also first reading, set in a public hearing for April 15th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Opposed? The next item is landmark designation and grant request 509 Lafarge Avenue. We're going to be considering resolution number 18, series 2025, a resolution approving a landmark designation for historical residential property located at 509 Lafarge Avenue and a resolution number 19, series 2025, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the La Comte House located at 509 Lafarge Avenue. And I hope I've meant, I hope I pronounced that correctly. So I'm going to leave it to staff for presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Emily Klein Gibson, Planner Two with the staff presentation. This is an application request for landmark status, a preservation and restoration grant, and a new construction grant for the property at 509 Lafarge Avenue, which is located on the southern end of Lafarge, right before Hutchinson Street. Criteria for landmark designation requires that a building be at least 50 years old and have either architectural, social, or geographical significance. The subject's building is approximately 115 years old and has been located in Louisville for approximately 82 years, satisfying that 50-year age requirement. Staff also finds the house meets criteria for architectural significance due to the pyramidal hip roof structure and square shape of the house, which was a common form in Louisville at the time and typically associated with coal miner housing. Aside from minor additions and changes in siding, the house has primarily maintained its original form. Notable cultural significance include the La Comte family, who were French immigrants that resided in the house for 20 years in the 1940s and have ties to local mining. The application also includes two grant requests. One is a preservation and restoration grant request for up to $40,000 and the other request is for a new construction grant for up to $15,000. For the preservation and restoration grant, all requested items can be found in table one on the right of the screen, which staff has analyzed against our criteria for preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation, as well as work noted in the historic structure assessment for the property. And staff finds that all criteria is met. For the new construction grant, which will be used for a rear addition on the building, staff finds the criteria is met, which includes the maximum height of the addition being below the existing building height. All setbacks are met and FAR would be 24% less than what is allowed by zoning, where a minimum of 10% is required. The Historic Preservation Commission also reviewed an alteration certificate application that included the new rear and a side addition, as well as other exterior changes noted in table one in the previous slide, and approved the alteration certificate and all grant requests with no conditions. So with all of this, staff recommends approval of resolution 18, series 2025, to landmark, grant a $5,000 landmark bonus, and name the home, the La Comte home. Staff also recommends approval of resolution 19, series 2025, for a combined total grants amounts of up to $55,000. This concludes the staff presentation. I'm available for any questions and the property owner is also present and available for questions. Thank you.
Does the staff, or does the property owner have a presentation?
No.
Okay. I'm going to ask for brief questions from council if they have any questions on the presentation. Otherwise, we'll, we'll go to the public comment. Yes, council member Cooperman.
I have basically one question. I'm going to ask, I don't know exactly how relevant it is, but, so I was looking at the, the work that's planned to be done on the house and it says install new furnace. And I am curious why they're, if they're thinking about a gas furnace or a heat pump?
That is a question that I would not know. It's the property owner would like to answer that?
Yeah, I definitely don't know the answer yet. What we'll do, what we have currently is a converted coal furnace, the gigantic old coal furnace. So we know we don't want that anymore. Takes up like 50 square feet. But if you're an advocate for that alternative heating method, certainly be into it. I can stay up here if you have any other questions. It, it's not part of the requirement, but it's, it is a point of information. It's useful. Thank you for not using coal. Oh, okay. Don't laugh. My father installed a coal stove in our house. Oh my gosh, did it smell bad. All right, I'm not going to go any further into it, trust me. All right, any other questions council members have? All right. Why don't we take public comment? No public comment. All right. Well, we'll go back to council. Do council members have any comments on or further questions?
I have a question. Was the, what were the comments that were made by the Preservation Commission on the
The preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission generally approved all of the requested items. There were no major comments for any changes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, member Tim.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, speak to the, the grant itself and the sort of the structure of it. I appreciate the, the structure of it that allows for, you know, some small amount, $15,000, but to, you know, like respecting the sort of size and the shape and, and doing new construction that complements the, the original house and it's not necessary in order to get, you know, your, your designation. It's not necessary to get the original grant. So I'm glad we had that in there as, you know, an extra thank you or carrot. I don't know if it's a big enough carrot to actually make that choice, but it's a sort of a thank you for making that choice and, and just acknowledging that, you know, you're putting a lot of your own money into preserving something in our community and I really, really appreciate that as an owner of a historic designated home. It's certainly near and dear to me and so I appreciate you coming forth with this project and that's what it's, that's what this fund is for and appreciate the HPC and Planning Commission for, or Planning Department for getting us here. So thanks, everybody.
Okay. Can I get a motion on our first resolution?
So moved. I move to approve resolution number 18, series 2025, a resolution approving a landmark designation for a historical resident, residential property located at 509 Lafarge Avenue. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion concerning the second.
Sure. I'll move that we approve resolution number 19, series 2025, a resolution approving a grant request for the property at 509 Lafarge Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations and thanks for contributing to historical preservation. All right, next item is resolution number 20, series 2025, a resolution approving temporary waiver of certain fees for downtown seasonal patio program. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I don't have a formal presentation. This is an item, as you may recall, last year, council chose to waive the fees for the seasonal patio program. The fees are 1,000 per patio. Those will come back online this year. Those applications typically go out in March unless council chooses to waive the fees again. We have some precedent of waiving the fees in the past during times of economic uncertainty. We bring this item forward for you tonight to consider whether or not you'd like to waive the fees for 2024. Happy to answer any questions you may have and I know Director Zakaro also has some history here in Chinaman.
I think it's 2025 that we're.
You are correct, it is 2025.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much. Any questions about the presentation? Brief as it was, yes. Council member Cooperman.
One, one question for the moment. So if we do waive the fees, as I understand, the, the budget assumes that we would collect them. And so I'm just curious, what would be the sort of formal process for amending the budget or what, what would be necessary if we, if we do waive the fees?
Yeah, that's a great question. We have budgeted for 25,000 in fees for this program in the 2025 budget at the year right this time. We do periodic budget amendments for council. We're working on scheduling one for May. We would incorporate this into that.
Any other questions? Okay, yes, council member Cooperman.
Maybe I'll just follow up briefly on that. So last year, the fees were waived and so I assume we did something similar with a budget amendment?
That would be my assumption as well.
And do we know last year, like where we, where we found the money to make up that, to make up that budget amendment?
Yeah, so this is budgeted out of your capital fund. So if you credit this back to your capital fund, we just do not get that revenue we expected, which would impact your fund balance in the end.
Okay, thank you.
Let's take any public comment we have. Public comment? No public comment. All right, back to council. Any comment? Yes, member Tim.
Yeah, so, you know, generally, I think, I'll, I'll start with saying generally, I think I'm in support of this. I have some questions as far as, or some comments and questions around some of the other aspects of it. You know, I, I know we waived it in 2020 during COVID, waived it again in 2021, and then we charged in '22 and '23 and then sort of, I'll just say with the, like debacle of, of the chaos of closure, non-close, and then an enhanced patio program, there was an attempt to try to figure out like a little bit how to appease the business owners that were a little upset and also like how to, how to do something a little better than we'd done in the past. And so one of the things we settled on was, was at least, you know, I say at least, waiving the fees so that it was, you know, a free, a free program, which was certainly an enhancement. And I think it was almost said in, you know, like sort of a tongue in cheek, like, well, it'd be enhanced if it were free. And then we made it free and I think that was pretty fantastic. So doing it again this year, there's a little bit of like, well, okay, so why would we ever charge ever again if we're going to, you know, again, do, give it back this year? And so I think having some idea, you know, are we doing this because we've done it? Or are we doing this because we're going to continue to do it? Or are we doing this because of something particular about this year, kind of like last year, or kind of like the COVID years where, where, where this is necessary? And so, well, I don't think we actually need to make that decision tonight. We can make a singular decision about this year. I think being thoughtful about, you know, the, the whys. And so what I'll, what I'll say in my, more of my comments is, this isn't free to the city. These are expensive to build to, when we built them. The idea is to charge over time to recoup that expense. In some ways, it's also a sunk cost that, that money has been paid for the, the, the original patios. And so we are only recouping expenses from years and years ago. But that was the idea, that the, these do cost money. And then additionally, as it's in the packet, it costs money to put them out there. It costs money to maintain them, to fix them and to replace them. And so this, you know, I've never, I never thought of the fee as, you know, a profit center or punitive or anything. It's just like, hey, these are great and if everybody pitches in, we can keep these and we can keep doing these. So I think a permanent, you know, non-charging for the patios doesn't make a ton of sense to me. And I think the concern I have this year over last year is while last year was clunky, everyone sort of applied for patios and then we said, hey, you don't have to pay or here's your thousand bucks back if you did pay. But when we announced before applications that the patios are free, you know, okay, I want a patio out in front of Fox Property Management? Like, why? I don't know, they're free, right? So when they're free, is the demand going to be really high? And if the demand's high, how do we pick winners and losers and who, who gets a patio and who doesn't get a patio when there's no price to get one? And we can't suddenly then just make 30 more because they're really expensive. And so, you know, I just want to caution that we might need some sort of plan for just suddenly having free patios that are, that are limited in quantity. And that, that is maybe one of my bigger concerns. So I would, I might say that, you know, I would be interested in maybe giving direction that, you know, I'm okay having this be free. I think that there should be something about, you know, people who have paid for this program in the past being at the top of the list of people to receive accredited patio. And then my next, and we can figure out if there's what, what you need to make this if people agree with these things, communicating that this won't be free next year, that, that we are, you know, planning on charging in the future. And if there is a lot more interest than we have patios, that we would, you know, potentially build more and that, and that costs money, right? So trying, trying to really get that out there that this isn't a right that they're free. It isn't just that we're doing this forever. So, and, you know, I thought a little bit about, you know, potentially, you know, if, if we have some sort of program where, you know, if you commit to a patio in 2025 or 2026, like set some date, it's maybe less expensive or what have you, to get a sense of how many we're going to have and how many we're going to need to add and that kind of thing, but get on this a little earlier and maybe give some sort of early bird specials for people getting in earlier so we have some sense of next year's desires and also just kind of helping them understand that it won't be free next year. So I know that's a lot, it's a little complicated. I just think, I think it's a little, it's, I'm nervous about just being like, yeah, cool, no, yeah, it's free, great. And then it just goes about like it did last year. I think, I think we need to be more thoughtful than that. So happy to hear other people's thoughts.
Want to get a clarification? There is a reason, or there is a way that we're, we're not picking winners and losers. There's a more, there's a different way we're choosing.
Right, so, you know, restaurants get preference. That's what we did last year. And then if there were patios left over, they could go to other businesses if they wanted them. So we could do that this year. And we could also add in if they had paid for a patio in the past, that can be a preference as well, which I don't think we did last year, but we could this year.
With, with that being said about last year, was it then within those two categories, first come, first served?
Yes, I believe so.
That's kind of what I was driving at, but there are two different groups about that. Okay, that's all. Other comments? Yes, council member Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with a number of comments that the mayor pro tem made, especially those around the idea of there's a cost associated with this for the city and we're just looking to recover those costs, right? We're not looking to profit from this program. And I understand in the past, there's been what I view as specific parameters around the decision as to why the fees were waived in those years in the past. And I'm not completely sure that the parameters or the reasons set forth tonight are convincing to me as to why specifically downtown businesses should get a free opportunity to help their business in a time of, I think in the packet said, economic uncertainty. I'm concerned that's not fair to other businesses. I'm concerned that's not fair to other businesses outside of the downtown area who are experiencing the same quote, economic uncertainty. And so I would actually propose that we follow through on what we said we were going to do last year, which is the fees come back. And if we want to think of ways to help our businesses during times of uncertainty, then I would like to take a more holistic approach that considers all businesses in Lewisville and not just those in the town, town area. So I would, I would actually propose separating the two, continuing this as is how we said we were going to in 2025, and then evaluating some other ways to support if we need to, beyond, you know, BAP and other things that we have in the community right now.
Yes, Councilmember Heffner.
I agree.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. So I think there, it, it goes more to the fact that as a council, we have an interest in the downtown being vibrant and an exciting and enjoyable place for residents and visitors alike. And that the patio program and the flowers and all the other costs that associated with setting it up and taking it down do that. So the city is also at great benefit and all of businesses, I think, not just in the downtown, but generally around. Because I think it helps to add to the energy that all of Lewisville has and feels. And since we would like to see that happen, I can see the city partnering, if you will, with the business owners. And instead of maybe saying, because like during COVID, there were extended weekends circumstances, and last year, maybe this year it is a 50/50 partnership. They helped to buy into it. I like the idea of if you pre-reserve next year, that maybe like we're looking at full, like the, moving the program back into, like we need to maybe evaluate the $1,000 cost. If we have to build new ones, if we have a lot of requests for this, then everybody's kind of, the businesses and the city are contributing and paying for this. So that we're not asking the businesses just to reimburse the city to set them up and, and build them. But that we let everybody understand this is a community effort. And I think when people come into Lewisville, visitors and residents alike, they think that way. They think that all of this has been put up by the city of Lewisville, not just, oh, it was Fox Properties who paid to have this put up. Or, you know, poor put this out here. I think they look at it and say, this is a reflection on us as a community, as a city. The flowers are gorgeous, the being outside and having dinner on a gorgeous sunny, sunny day. I think that's why I'm in favor of saying, let's work out a way that we, the city, and the businesses can work together on some fees, incentivize for next year, if you pre-plan it, so that if we do need more, because we, it seemed like a lot of people in last year enjoyed having them that were not restaurants. I'd be in more in favor of finding some middle ground there versus just saying, this is 100% on the businesses. And then, then we wonder why it maybe isn't as successful, because we didn't invest in it. And I, I mean, I hear the, the comments of spending too much money only in the downtown. But I, but I really think that as people come into town, they then see a lot of the businesses on South Boulder, or if they're driving here from somewhere else and coming off of 36 and down McCaslin, on their way to this beautiful and well-advertised summer destination, they'll frequent those businesses as well. And we do have plans, and I, and I agree with that, I think there needs to be a bigger holistic process. I know that Director Zakaro and Manager Zorate are working on a lot of economic vitality programs to incentivize other small businesses as well as large. So I'm sort of in favor, but in favor of modifying it and saying, let's partner with businesses instead of either they pay all or we do.
Just a quick clarification, when you say partner, are you suggesting some kind of split of?
The costs. Yeah, basically, we were essentially reducing the costs. So that we're saying that the, the city is investing in this program for our downtown beautification and enjoyment. And so are the business owners, and their contribution is payment for, you know, part of the cost of having these patios. So we're absorbing some of the cost and so are the business owners.
Thanks. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to agree with some of the things that were said. I also think that the program could be continued as a free program for this year, but with the intention of charging next year and perhaps expanding it. Because I have discussed with several restaurant owners in the McCaslin corridor about how much they would love to have a patio program for their businesses as well. And so if we could come up with a way to partner with the business where they're assuming part of the cost and perhaps part of the labor of setting them up or putting the flowers out or whatever it is. I think it would be beneficial to expand the program to other areas besides just the downtown.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooperman.
I'd like to start by thanking our Community Development Director for the response to the question I asked before the council meeting. I was really hoping to, to try to get sort of a, a perspective on, you know, how much, what does it mean to the city to waive about $25,000 in fees? And I think sort of the most, maybe the most useful piece of information was, you know, that Director Zakaro gave an estimate for, you know, how much extra sales tax we sort of bring in because of the patio program being there. And he estimated that around $20,000. So, you know, just kind of a ballpark thing. And so, but I think that's helpful because, you know, like, you know, we do want to recoup the costs, right? I, I think to some extent, but we also do want to invest. And, you know, just to get a sense for, you know, how much does our investment get us versus how much do the, you know, the fee waiver cost us? So I found that very helpful. Yeah, and I, I don't know, maybe I'll just hold it off for there at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Sort of state my point of view and then I can kind of summarize. I'm in favor of waiving the fee for this year. I think from my standpoint, the rationale, which I appreciate the Mayor Protem raising that. I, I think particularly this year, there's an awful lot of uncertainty, economic uncertainty that we certainly have heard from the downtown businesses. Now, that is something that perhaps could be said every year, right? Being a small business is taking risks, and I do understand that. I, I guess I would say that this is a particularly challenging year because, in, in part because we've got a lot of people in our community who maybe are, are losing their jobs. I don't know how that's going to affect the businesses downtown. I don't really want to necessarily find out, I'm willing to take a risk for the amount that we're talking about to waive those fees, just for this year. I, I think we decide each year on our, on our own. I think this is a question of both and. I appreciate Councilmember Hamilton's point about fairness, and I assume that it's also a, a point that Councilmember Heffner echoes in his support of those comments. I think though, that, that doesn't, in my view, augur for cutting back the program so that the both groups, downtown and outside of downtown, are in the same position and the ones downtown get the benefit. But that we think very long and hard about what we do for businesses, we're not downtown. I'm the Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee of the council. This is something we're, we're in the process of doing right now. And because we know that there's concerns. Councilmember Fahy, this is not the first time that you've raised those concerns, because the businesses in Ward II, I think, are, have asked those questions. But I don't think the answer is to say we shouldn't, we shouldn't permit the, or we shouldn't allow the downtown businesses to get a waiver this year. And I think in terms of picking winners and losers, another good point made by the Mayor Protem, I, I think that the current way we're doing it is okay. I'm a little nervous about picking winners and losers in terms of saying that the ones who've done it in the past get a priority. I think it's a better thing to, within those two groups, to say first come, first serve and let things get sorted out that way. That's a much, in my view, kind of a fair thing, particularly if you've got a new business, which we're hoping to get downtown. You know, we, I think we want to do it without, without sort of giving a privilege to people from before. So I'm, I'm for this this year. I think, I think we've got a rationale, or at least I'm comfortable with the rationale. I understand, we got, had actually a really good conversation about this tonight, so I appreciate that. It, it, it sounds like there are mixed views. This is one where we've had a whole bunch of different comments so far. And perhaps we need a little more discussion about it before we move, you know, up or down. We can either, you know, have a motion and do friendly amendments, or we can do substitute motions. It is possible just to do one motion after another, as I think Councilmember Heffner is about ready to suggest, but.
No, I have an actual, I have an actual point of discussion, which is, look, I share the fairness concern. I think if the right thing for small business is giving $1,000 to small businesses, we should give it to all small businesses in Lewisville, like tonight, and just write everybody a check. But I don't think anybody's proposing that. I don't think we're ready to do that. And so it leaves us back where we started, which is, we had this long conversation about closing Main Street. For a lot of reasons, we decided not to do it. And instead, we, we did the patio program enhancement, and the only enhancement we could think of was making it free. If we want to continue to make it free, I, I think that's fine. I mean, I think it's a, a nice thing to do. Main Street is important. But I think we should just, let's have it be free. I don't want to have this conversation every single year about what are we going to do for Main Street, Main Street closure and patio program. I, I think it's a disservice to us and to the businesses to just constantly tinker around with this. And I, I hear the Mayor Protem's point about, you know, the, the, his reservations about doing it forever. But I also think once you do think, something a few times in a row, it sort of becomes the norm. And if we want the patio program to be a city-funded program, we should just make it one. You know, I, I think I'm more in line with the Mayor Protem's comments about sort of having some price, whatever that may be, so that people don't just do it on a whim and sign up on a whim for something because it's free. But I think if we're going to make it free, we should just, we should just do it and stop torturing this, this particular part of what we do. Because it's, it's, I don't, we've had this conversation so many times now.
Any other comments before we perhaps make a motion? Yes, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I think it's, it's interesting. It's really nice to hear everybody's comments, because there is some, I mean, to Dietrich's point there at the end, it's like, I mean, in some ways it's just $1,000, and you could give it to anyone for any reason that's hurting. And then other ways, like, no, this, this is a unique thing that we do that has a price tag on it, that we have a ability to not charge, not charge them. So there, there is an actual difference, but, but I do get the sentiment that if the aim is just general, you know, recession risk and depression risk, it's like, well, everyone's facing that, right? So those, that was really interesting to hear. I, I also, you know, the idea of maybe splitting it or, you know, either, I mean, that, that's something I could, you know, it's 500 bucks instead of 1,000 for the remaining, you know, for the foreseeable future. So it's a, it's a reduced price, which everyone will enjoy, but they still have to pay for it, because it's of value to them. And, and I think, you know, it's, you can go either way. If you, if you say it's 1,000 bucks, I bet they all still pay for it because it benefits them to have it, and they don't want to not have it, right? But that doesn't mean we, well, let's charge 1,500 or 2,000, see how much we can get out of them, just because it's a benefit, right? And so all of these things that I was hearing are really, I think, great. And, and I think the, the thing that maybe overall is the most important to me is this concept of like, we want downtown to be fantastic in these months. We want people to come down and it look a certain way and feel a certain way. And, you know, I've always, you know, I've pushed for, for years now, since, since COVID, for the closure, at least in the summers, or partial closure, weekend closures would have you, to make it a destination. I think the patios do that, and I think the more there are, the better that is. And the more consistent they are through a block, the better that is. And if a restaurant takes three instead of two, or two instead of one, the better that is. I think all of that makes it feel better. So I think whatever we can do to, to get those numbers up, I think is positive. But again, not just losing $25,000 revenue, if this is more popular and we get more patios, it's real money that we have to add, not just not receive revenue, but add expense of making new patios. So I don't like the idea of these just always being free. So I will propose a motion, Mayor, that I, I would, I would propose we approve Resolution Number 20, Series 2025, Resolution approving, approving the temporary waiver of certain fees for downtown seasonal patio program with amendment of waiving half the fee and, and making this a permanent new fee.
I will second that.
Further discussion?
About that. I just have a question about the last part, $500 forever. Until somebody changes it again. Great.
Now I'm confused. $500 just?
I apologize. I was doing my best to kind of work within the resolutions there, but it's, it's clunkier. I, I should just restate it that, you know, that I would, I would move that we pass a resolution to reduce the fee from $1,000 to $500. And it already is a consistent year after year fee, so that the second part would just be what it is. So I'm proposing that we reduce the fee to $500 per patio in perpetuity.
And I second that.
Any other comments?
I have one.
Yes.
I would like for there to be some measure, discussion with staff in figuring out if there is additional demand. We don't have enough patios, what that would cost to add more. Obviously, we can't do it this year. But what that would cost moving forward to build more patios to the point of the Mayor Protem to continue to enhance and expand the program, whether that's just in the downtown or downtown in other places, and figure out how that fits into our budget.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yeah, I just have a question about, as Councilmember Cooperman asked, if it costs us 25,000 a year to do the patio program, but that brings us in an additional approximately 20,000 in revenue and taxes, then it's only costing us $5,000 a year to do the patio program. Is that right?
Well, I would say the patio program is more expensive than the, just the cost of the patios. Because there's a lot of maintenance, there's the putting them up, taking them down, has, that costs money. The flower program costs money. We're not including any of that. Really, the, the, the fee is really for the patios themselves to maintain the patios and refresh them as needed.
Okay, so, but we pay for the flowers and the maintenance.
Yeah, 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 we pay. Basically, the city takes on the cost of having its staff go out and set it up, take it down, close the streets, all that. Storage, as well as the, the flower program has an expense as well.
And then is there a possibility at some point in the future, expanding this opportunity? And then is there a possibility at some point in the future, expanding this opportunity to other parts of the city?
So that's probably a bigger discussion. I think Main Street is unique because it's really the only place in the city where the businesses front the street. The majority, if not all of the rest of the businesses, really are within, you know, they front parking lots. Certainly, we had a patio program during COVID in the parking lots that was pretty unique and extraordinary. Any business can come in and request their own patio. So a city setting up a patio in a parking lot, I think, is what we're talking about. So that's a big discussion about, you know, is that where the city wants to invest in those businesses outside of downtown, because they're just physically different?
Right, but the patio program in downtown also eliminates parking.
Yeah, it's not an issue of eliminating parking. It's just about creating a pedestrian space and keeping circulation. So one of the issues, why it's a bigger discussion, is like the the COVID patio program, we had to look at site plans and make sure that emergency circulation worked well in every single parking lot, and they were allowed to set up their own patios. The city wasn't giving them patios. So, you know, outdoor pop-up on, you know, on a property, that might be an idea as well. It's just whether city provides the infrastructure or not. Again, probably a different discussion.
Councilmember Hefner?
Just have a, I I went on laser fuchsia. I've been sitting here. In 2015, we had a packet that had some good numbers in it. If you want to amass enough funds, and this is in $2015, if you want to amass enough funds to be able to pay for the replacement of the patios when they were out, in 2015, you needed to charge 1,675 per patio per year. So and that's 10 years ago, so I mean, assume it's substantially more than that. So even $1,000 isn't covering our cost of replacing the the patios when they were out.
Any other, I mean, one, that's a, it's a good point. One of the the concerns that I have about doing more than one year in perpetuity is we're talking about trying to increase the numbers of patios, demand for patios, and we're locking in a certain, I think we're locking in a future cost that we don't we don't quite know how much the city is going to end up taking it on the chin if if all that happens, if we do it in perpetuity. I I'm comfortable, well, just my comment, I think it's fine to have a splitting. I think there's a consensus, actually, on the council, probably, that we have a a split, but we'll find that out. But I guess I'd still like to keep it just for this year only. But any other, yes, Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that my stance on this and reasons behind it is crystal clear before we go into a vote, in that I want nothing more than all the businesses in Lewisville to be successful in any economic client climate. And I continue to have concerns about waiving these fees when we said we were going to charge them last year. And certain businesses benefit more from waiving those fees and having those patios than other businesses, as is clear by the sales tax revenue that was quoted. And so I just continue to have concerns that this is not fair. If I were a business on McHaslin, and I said, well, I have to pull a permit, and I have to pay for my own patio, this just doesn't seem fair to me. I have I'm in the same economic climate as every other business. So I personally, I'm ready to move on and vote, but I just wanted it to be clear. I want everyone to be successful, and I personally think we should just do what we said we were going to do last year. No one from the DBA is here right now to speak. And then let's evaluate how we help all businesses in as fair a way as possible when there's uncertainty in the economy for any reason.
Thanks. Any other, yeah, Councilmember Cooperman?
Just a small comment. I guess, instead of setting, say, a $500 fee in perpetuity, I would be much more comfortable if we went this route to have basically a formula, you know, that says, that takes into account, basically, you know, what we're going to, well, it figures out what we're going to charge, or maybe half of what we would charge, based on, you know, how much it costs the city to take care of them, to get new ones, how much tax revenue we pull in, and so forth. You know, I don't think coming up with that is going to happen right now, but I I would much prefer something that was a little bit more involved, sort of echoing the mayor's comments around that.
You're right, it's not going to get done tonight, that particular part of it. I think that's all the more reason to do it one year. I want to ask, I want to ask for a friendly amendment, or I'm going to make a friendly amendment, which would be everything that you just said, or the motion that was made and seconded, as well as, actually, before we do that, Councilmember Kern, raise your hand.
Yeah, I just, thank you. I I was just to kind of let you guys know what I'm thinking. We we spend money on holiday lights every year for the beautification and enjoyment, and we choose to enhance that mostly, like 90% of it is in the downtown. We don't do anything in McHaslin. Would love to expand that and actually include much more of the city. I look at this investment in a similar way, but in the summertime, that we are, we're investing in the flowers, so we're also investing in the patios. And so that that's why I don't mind reducing the fees again this year. I know that there's no specific business owners that are here, you know, and DBA is not here specifically saying, please don't do this and waive the fees. I think it sends a message, though, that this is important to all of us, and it sends the message to the business owners that we do hear them and we understand, even if they're not all in the room tonight, that there are pluses and minuses and some struggles, and we're in it with them. So I just thought I'd put that out there.
Good, good point. To build on that just for a second, I I think this program and Councilmember Hamilton's point, I think this this program is narrowly tailored to the purpose that we're trying to serve, whereas doing something exactly like it for McHaslin, who's a little clunky, it'd be nice to get more information from them, maybe a different kind of program we could get out there. I think it's incumbent on me, one of the signals that I'm getting, is I need to take this up, we need to take this up at the EDC to move ahead with something like that, especially if we approve something, because I take Councilmember Hamilton's point about fairness very seriously. I think that's a very legitimate point. What I would, my friendly amendment is simply to limit the, what is essentially a a waiver of half the fee this year. And, you know, yeah, so I think, to be clear, that last line of the or the the final whereas in the resolution, which is on page 248, would be, would be to read, City Council found that it should lessen the financial burden of downtown businesses by waiving one-half of the city-imposed fees of $1,000 for those downtown businesses participating in the patio program for the 2025 season and intends to charge fees in 2026 unless further action is taken by council. That's my friendly amendment.
Great. Accept it.
Second is?
I'll accept the second, yeah.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote, unless there's further question?
Just one quick question. So the the intent is, we think 1,000 is the right fee for 26, or we think, let's have this discussion again in a year?
The latter.
Okay.
Maybe it should be a whole lot sooner than a year from now. Sorry, I have the conversation.
Yeah, because I I think the question is legitimate.
Yeah.
That we may need to think about, depending on the reception to this, we may need to think about what it's what the actual fee would be if there's a rising demand and we have to buy more.
Sure.
Patios.
I I would just offer one broader point of discussion, which is, we have a list of fees that is many pages long. We charge fees for a lot of stuff that impact a lot of businesses and other people and so on, and to spend this amount of time on one fee and to to plan to revisit it in a full council discussion every single year to decide whether that fee is is appropriate or should it be cut by half, is a striking departure for how from how we handle pretty much every other fee in the city, which is we do them all at once. And I would encourage us to think about combining this fee into our very long fee schedule and treating it, you know, as as we do most others.
Thank you. Let's take, with that proposed change, let us vote on Resolution Number 20, Series 2025, a resolution approving the temporary waiver of certain fees for the downtown seasonal patio program as amended. And can we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One, one additional point that I'll I'll make is, as I said, I think it's incumbent on EDC, take this up, and we will, and make a recommendation to minimize the amount of time we have to spend next year. Fair enough? All right. The next item is wildfire mitigation campaign development contract with Forest Marsh. Do we have it? It's not an applicant presentation, but a presentation by staff.
Yes. Good evening. 27 years on, you're all still just as nerve-wracking as normal. Rob and I are here tonight to discuss the Forest Marsh contract for wildfire mitigation. This was on consent a couple of weeks ago, and there were some questions about it, so we're bringing it back to you for some additional information tonight. Just some background, in 2023, this city applied to the Colorado State Forest Service for a grant. It was to, it's for wildfire mitigation in two particular ways. It was fuels reduction, so that's the grazing and the mowing that you see on all open spaces, but it also was to hire a mitigation coordinator. We did hire that position. She was here briefly and then found her dream job and left us, which was very unfortunate for us, but we did try twice to refill the position and could not find an acceptable applicant. So in March of 2024, we decided to kind of revamp the the process, and instead of hiring a person, this was supposed to be a person doing this job, we would bring in a consultant to do a wildfire mitigation campaign for us, and that is the contract you have in front of us today. We did go back to the Forest Service to make sure they were okay with the change in the in the using the grant monies that way, and they were fine with that. This project does still have to be completed by July of 2027. So we revised the scope for mitig from the mitigation coordinator role to this consultant to do a wildfire campaign for us. It is really meant to bring in a firm that has done this for other places to generate interest in what we're doing, why we're doing it, and the end hope would actually be behavior change from people. So when Rob does a home hardening ordinance, and council all says while they're sitting up there, this is really good stuff, and we need to make sure this information gets out to people, this is to help us get that information out to people. It's the campaign, campaign as we see it, is much too large for in-house comm staff to do. It's really a dedicated campaign for this role. Some of the things they would do include getting all the information we have on this topic together in one place on our website, attending events, creating collateral for us to get information out to people, and it includes things we've already done, as well as things we're hoping to do. Should we do a woo-ee code, they would help get that information out as well. Currently, we have about $123,000 left in the grant, so we have the money to do this contract. We really feel strongly this is a great use of those funds, because it is actually replacing what was a full-time staff member. I'm going to let Rob carry on from here.
All right, so I'm going to just give a little bit more information. I think Meredith went over a lot of the pertinent information, but I'll talk a little bit more about what the contract has for how the campaign would be structured. I I do want to mention that this has been a collaborative effort with several different divisions within the city, including open space, community development, communications, city manager's office, and the recovery and resiliency division. So we've all been working on this, all worked on the RFP, how to scope it, and creating the criteria for trying to bring someone in to do this project for us. We did get six applications, and we decided to interview three different groups. There were really great proposals. They varied a lot in the scope. We kind of left it a little bit open-ended with overarching goals, so we were really able to see how each of these different firms, you know, what they would bring to the table and what their experience was. So of all the staff of from all those divisions, we were unanimous in wanting to bring Forest Marsh together, our bring a proposal for Forest Marsh to City Council for final approval. They have a lot of expertise in resiliency communication, wildfire, science-based communication as well, so they they really stood out amongst the firms. Here are just the goals of the campaign. Really, what we want to do is, we have some requirements, as you know. We're anticipating probably a woo-ee code as well. We want to get the word out, but we also want to educate residents about what they can do, even if they're not required to do it, even if they're not coming in for a permit. We want to get the word out about how to be firewise and be more resilient when it comes to wildfire. So we want to take this opportunity to promote that. We also want to promote what all the things that the city is doing within public lands and open-space lands to make those areas more resilient and resistant to wildfire, as well as educate how you strike that balance between ecological health and wildfire resiliency as well. So there's there's a lot that we want to achieve with this contract, and it's 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 an exciting project for us. The audience, again, isn't just those who are coming in for permits to do fire hardening or those who might be subject to the woo-ee code in the future. It's really citywide in order to educate about what the city's doing and what they can do to become more resilient. You know, this isn't going to just be city staff. We're absolutely anticipating on collaborating with our regional partners, wildfire partners, the Fire District, I think the chief is still here. Any others that we identify, we're going to bring to the table to help develop this. And then here's kind of what we have in mind. This is what we've worked out with Forest Marsh, is a phased approach. Really, the, you know, 1A and 1B is developing the materials. We've had some discussions with them about, you know, and there's probably some flexibility, but we did want to have some certainty with what kind of information would we get, what would they be obligated to provide, what would be most helpful? We talked about the website, so they're going to help us develop a website with graphics and messaging, and then go into phase two, which is really that education and outreach. So they're going to help guide us through that public education and outreach campaign. And then the final phase is kind of turning it over to staff, because this is a limited contract, limited funds, limited time. So at some point, they'll actually turn this all over to us. We will, I anticipate, continue the campaign, continue educating with the materials that have been provided. So that is generally the scope and how we have crafted this, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, are we also partnering with Boulder County and their fire mitigation efforts and their new processes, procedures book that they came up with?
I anticipate we'll coordinate with them and and work with them where appropriate for our own campaign, and I'm not exactly sure what the opportunities are, but we'll be looking at all of our regional partners on collaboration.
But the the Forest Mars will be at least looking at what they've come up with to get ideas about what would work in this area, for example?
Yeah, I I think we will be making sure we are doing that, making sure everything's regionally appropriate for us as well.
Okay, and then also partnering, as you said, with the Fire Department? Okay. And then also partnering, as you said, with the fire department, also with the police department?
Yes, we will be coordinating with them as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to talk a little bit about the phases. So phase one B. Like, is that, is that an example of what we might get? Is that what we're actually planning to get is an infographic, a webpage, a fact sheet? I mean, is that sort of the comprehensive list?
Um, it, it is generally a list of what we would expect to get. Again, I think there's flexibility when we actually get into the campaign development, but because they have, we have limited budget, they have limited time. We wanted some predictability, so we weren't, there, there was a clear expectation with the consultant that we weren't going to ask for double of what we could pay for, right? So, um, this is generally what we're expecting, but I think there's flexibility.
So I just, I'm having, I'm struggling a little bit. So the, the proposal has 595 consultant hours at a cost of $57,000 to, to develop phase one and, or phase one A and phase one B. And I'm just struggling a little bit with how is that almost 600 hours of work?
Um, so I think what we're anticipating is there's going to be a lot of back and forth, a lot with staff. Again, they're going to have to do outreach with all of these organizations we just talked about. And then there's going to have to be review of drafts. I think there, we expect they're going to, um, have a high level of graphics and communications that, um, you know, we really don't have the capacity to do. We don't have the, the staff hours to do it here. I haven't really analyzed the hours in relation to these deliverables, but I think it's going to take more than, they aren't going to just sit down and create a one pager. That one pager is going to take a lot of coordination, a lot of back and forth with city staff and other organizations.
So let's, let's talk about phase two, which I assume is sort of similar. I mean, this is roughly what we're expecting.
Right. So they are going to be guiding us on how to get the, how, how to get the word out. So we're going to create all the materials. They're going to help us create a plan for the outreach campaign. And they're going to be guiding us, um, through that campaign. Um, you know, there, they have a lot of expertise in how to do this type of outreach, so they'll be guiding us along the way.
And, and will they be doing the outreach or are we doing the outreach?
Um, I think that's a good question. I think we'll mostly be sending stuff out through our existing channels. So we'll have to be partnering and taking responsibility on that. And, and certainly Meredith can add to that.
Yeah, we'll be working, they'll be working closely with our comm staff to make sure we're using all of our communications channels. But in addition to that, um, Forest Marsh themselves have done these types of, um, campaigns really successfully in other communities. And I think we're, we're leaning a lot on them, like for the hours and so forth. We're leaning a lot on them to say, this is what it's cost for us because we know what, how, they aren't guessing on these numbers. This is what they've used before in other communities.
I guess it's just like, it's hard for me to understand. So phase two, they have 214 consultant hours to make a calendar and a campaign partner inventory, which I assume is a list of organizations that we're probably already pretty familiar with.
I think a lot of what they, that they talked about in their interview was they will go, they have local staff and they will go out of their way to come to town and find the places that we're not hitting, you know? So we can use our regular communications channels and they're going to do some effort to figure out who aren't we reaching for our normal channels and give us some help with that.
Okay, that's helpful. And then my last question, and I don't think this was in your deck, but in section four of the contract, we have a bracket that says further revise is needed to reflect whether contract is hourly or flat. Or actually says of flat amount. I think it's supposed to say or flat amount. It, are we, are we paying them hourly or we, is this a, you know, it is what it is?
Right?
Yeah, I think what we can do is have an estimated number of hours or a not to exceed amount. Usually I think we use not to exceed amounts quite a bit in other contracts.
And so then we'll actually pay them based on hours worked. Okay. Do we need to revise what we're approving to have that in there? Or is it okay to have the, the bracket? I guess that's a question for our attorney.
I think that's covered in our normal statement of, um, staff and Americans fix small errors in the, in the contract.
Although that wouldn't be a small error. That, that's really more for like Scrivener's errors. Um, yes, let me take a look. This is our standard agreement. I'll just need to see how we incorporated the.
And the, the reason my question is just like, my concern about what appears to be a huge number of hours is reduced if we're paying hourly and they're sort of tracking their time and, you know, we're getting value for the money. Um, but if we're prepaying this huge number of hours and then we get a, you know, we get a calendar and a list of organizations we already know about.
No, I don't think the plan is to prepay. It would be, they would bill us with a list of what their hours have been spent on.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Questions? Yeah, councilwoman Cooper.
One little clarification. The $123,000, is that what remains in the grant after we pay for this consulting service? Or is that what we're using to pay for the consulting service?
I believe that's what we're using to pay for the consulting service.
Okay. And another little question, how does this, how would you say that the scope, um, for this contract compares to, um, what the, our former staff member was sort of charged with doing?
Um, to be honest, it's probably a little more specific because when we hired that staff person originally, we, we hadn't had that position before. So we weren't entirely sure what they were going to be doing. So now we have a better idea of what we really want to come out of this campaign, I think, two years in.
Okay. So then I, I wanted to follow up a little bit on what, uh, councillor Hutter was, was asking about. So I don't, I mean, another concern with, that I have with phase one B. And I, I probably voiced this a little bit before, but you know, a, a bunch of those items on there um, don't really require, I, I, I would say new research, right? I mean, you can go to like an organization like Firewise or Fire adapted and you can find fact sheets or infographics or whatnot, uh, that tell you about how to harden your home or how to create defensible space around your home. So I, I feel like, you know, the work, like there's, there's not, there's not a lot of original research that is necessary, I would guess, uh, to fill in the, the items on that, on that list. You know, you, clearly you want to make them as specific as possible to Louisville. But well, first of all, I don't know if we have enough information to make them super specific to Louisville. And the recommendations, as I understand, are, are fairly general. Yeah.
I'll say, I'll say two things. One is we did leave it general because we want to be able to have some discussion about what we want to get out of it. But, um, and looking at the campaigns they have done for other organizations, a large part of what they do is, is explaining the risk to hope to change behavior. So it's really not just a fact sheet of here's the new code and here's how you could build your house. It's a story and a conversation of, I don't want to say scare people into doing something, but it's really an issue of trying to change behavior, not so much just getting information out. So that's really what they excel at and what we saw in their interview. So I think that is part of what takes a lot more time.
Right. Okay. And then maybe one more question, sort of as a follow-up, that, that, that was very helpful. So, uh, I guess about phase two, um, I also am a little bit concerned about, you know, whether, whether what's been laid out like is, is going to reach everyone we want to reach essentially. You know, we, as Director Zucaro was saying, right? We don't, we don't want to just get people who come in for permits, right? We want to educate everyone in the whole city about these items. And it's just not clear to me that, you know, if we, if we take what we're given, um, and we go through the usual channels, I think we know that the usual channels have limitations. And so, you know, i- is there something more that Forest Marsh is sort of offering that will help us bridge that, that gap? Or I, I don't know.
I think that, I mean, and Rob can speak to this too. When we did the interviews, they, um, they have a history of campaigns in other communities that are very, uh, effective at what they do and at reaching people that we don't normally reach from our stuff. And I think that was one of our, the real selling points for us to want to use them as a, as a vendor compared to the other people we interviewed. They, they have a, they have a local connection, so they understand the local needs, but they also have a broad understanding of the, maybe, for lack of a better word, the psychology behind it and how you get information out to people who wouldn't normally respond to those.
Yeah. And, and I think branding was a real important part of it. How do you make it specific for the community? So I think they, you know, I think they have expertise in that, that, you know, like they, they can communicate things and they're professionals at it. So they know, and they talked a lot about the psychology in the interview about how they communicate to try to, um, modify behavior, which sounds like, you know, that's a, a hard way to say it, but really we're trying to get people to make good decisions based on good information is another way of saying it. And sometimes people don't do that just because they don't know. So we're trying to get good information out there.
And so just as a final little question, you feel like the way that the scope is laid out, it's clear enough that that's what we're going to get from the consultant?
I think the scope, um, and part of the way we laid it out was that we know basically what we want, but we want to leave some flexibility for when there are good ideas that we weren't anticipating.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Count, uh, member ten.
Well, if, if it's probably more common, if you want to take it later.
Why don't we, we'll, we'll get to the comments and just after we get public comment. Yes, councilmember Currie.
Thank you. Um, thank you for bringing this to us and, and doing the extensive interviews. I, I really appreciate that we're coming up with a method to help engage the non-fire impacted portions of Louisville and understanding, um, the urgency to this topic. As we just saw up in Berthoud yesterday with a severe wind, red flag day. And, uh, there was a grassland fire and a house burned to the ground. And those are the kind of things we don't want to have happen in Louisville. And hopefully this is, and I, my question is, is this the kind of program that helps inform our residents of things like that? So that they know this is a red flag day. This is a, a day when, you know, the, the electricity is going to be at a high sensitivity per XL Energy's presentation that I think less than 100 residents out of 20,000 attended. So I think like that information is not, it's publicly available, but is not public knowledge, common knowledge. And I'm hoping that that will also be part of this, not just pure mitigation, grazing opens. I just wanted to be clarified that information that's around emergency preparedness type of things like that is also part of that educational program.
Yeah, I anticipate it would be. I think, I think there's the opportunity to address all of those things.
Terrific. I, I like the fact that you already pre-thought this, that the, the mandated state wooey and from changes that are coming will be part of that. Because that was one of my concerns is how do we inform the whole city of changes that, uh, are going to be mandated for portions of our community? The other question I had is, do we have plans specifically? And it may be a component of the phase three. I guess what I was looking for is more specificity on how we're measuring success with this. So that, because it is a, like a short-term program to set us up. So how are, how are we measuring that, that it was a successful program? And that we do have the ability and the staff to, like staff capacity, I guess, because, you know, we don't have a whole nother person to continue this program moving forward.
Great. Um, well, we haven't really anticipated actual measurables, but we could consider that. Um, I think, you know, there's lots of ways that we can contemplate doing that. I think once we have this set up, there's a really strong base. And so the staff that is here doing that work has a lot of re, that, there's a lot of resources to pull from to answer kind of that phase three. Certainly we're not going to be creating, the idea is we're not creating new materials. The campaign is over, but we have a, a whole library of really great information that we can use as opportunities arise. That's how I'm seeing phase three. But as, as far as measuring success, we could certainly put some thought into, um, you know, that could be, you know, permits obtained or other things that we can work on.
Also, um, when we did interview them, they'd mentioned KPIs and figuring out their, how, they have ways to measure how the information is being received and what's being, um, taken in by people. So they can offer us help with that as well.
That we're, even though it's grant money, it's still, you know, well over a hundred thousand dollars. And I, I think having a measurable for, for that level of, um, financial commitment is worthwhile, um, for us to, to put in place. Uh, and let me think, I was just like, I'm so sorry. Like as you were saying that, I was thinking of something else and then I was waiting impatiently for your answer. So no, I guess this is going to, I think my, my one concern though is being able to continue this when they're done. And that we do have the, the means to expand the program. Because as you know, our community expands, um, and contracts and expands again, you know, there's going to be new people and new staff. And it would be great if this was a continuous program. Oh, that's what I was, will there also, will, will staff be taking into consideration recommendations from this organization, from Forest Marsh on partnering with organizations? So if they feel the need to like have specific partnerships to help enhance or extend this beyond, um, phase three, is staff considering those longer-term partnerships?
Yeah, anything that they learn from this and they want to pass on to us, we will happily take. To your other point about, you know, it's a short-term contract. It was going to be that way with the grant money anyway, whether it was a person or whether it was a campaign. So this is what we think is, given the amount of time left in the grant, we think this is the best use of the funds because we know that they will end at a certain date.
Thank you.
I have a question that really goes to the timing. I know that the fire department, well, we've got the work that you're doing. Um, and thank you for the work you're doing on wooey statewide. And that's coming. Um, I think the fire department is doing their own study on some issues relating to fire. That weren't covered by our original study. Um, the question is, is it important right, uh, now or soon to do the campaign that we're talking about? Or is, would it be preferable to do it after those activities have come out and we've got recommendations and so forth? And a little bit more information that perhaps could be included in the materials?
Yeah. Well, I think that the timing might work out perfectly. And I think we can make sure that we time it so that we are incorporating, um, the wooey code that we're anticipating this year. You, I think the fire hardening code is in effect right now and we do want help. So I think it's a little bit of, of both, but it would, it would be great to, you know, use their expertise now and then save some of the capacity in this contract for, so I think we'll be conscious of that as we, you know, work with them moving forward.
Fair enough. Um, why don't we take some public comment? Whoop. There's, uh, the city attorney.
Yes, thank you.
Has a comment. Go ahead. She's waving, uh, yeah.
Yes. Um, I just wanted to follow up on, uh, councilmember Heffner's questions and confirm that the contract is, um, the compensation under the contract is a not to exceed amount. And the, um, invoicing is to be done monthly for services performed at the, according to the rate schedule in that exhibit B. So it's not an upfront payment of the contract cost. The city will only pay for services that it actually receives under the schedule.
We just need to replace that bracket with hourly?
Replace that bracket, um, yes.
In, in section four?
Yeah, 4.0A, yes.
Is that a Scrivener's?
Um, it is a Scrivener's and, you know, the first sentence does read, uh, not to exceed the amounts set forth in exhibit B. So we will make that correction before the contract is signed. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Um, if we can take, uh, public comments, let's do that right now.
Um, Margaret Falco?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Falco. I am a resident of Superior and I'm also a general contractor with my builder's license, um, here in Louisville, currently working on hardening a home, uh, right up the street from here. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I really commend you guys for doing the work and investing in, in, uh, communication because that's one of the things I'm seeing, um, in Colorado. I'm relatively new to the state. I've, I've been in the building industry for 25 years. And as a lumber and building material specialist, it was my job to communicate. as a lumber and building material specialist, it was my job to communicate change to people, contractors in my industry, and I don't see a lot of that going on right now. I wanted to mention the the Senate Bill 23166 that one is going into effect in January 1, 2026, which is the new building codes for WUe, which is the Colorado Wildfire Resilience Board. The codes are written, they go, they will be finalized on March 20th. I'm sorry, 30th. I encourage everybody to read them, and I also encourage everybody to look at the map because there's good portions of Louisville that are on the map. What does that mean? That means from a remodeling point of view, if I have to change out any siding, more than 5% of the siding on the house, I have to harden the whole entire home. And based on the codes that I'm currently looking at, that's more than $100,000 cost for every homeowner. If I'm moving away from a press board siding to a fiber cement siding. So there's a lot of change coming to the building industry. And I am just really want to encourage dialogue within the building department and the state as a whole. I also was reading, because I reading through the 4 Mars report and I saw some reference to Home Depot being a place to communicate with contractors. I would strongly encourage going to Lafayette Lumber, Boulder Lumber and the independent building supply houses. And that's where we all shop. And that's where we all are. So I strongly encourage to use the independent lumberyards because they are on top of the building materials needed. And kind of the change that's coming down the pipeline. So once again, I am looking forward to seeing how the building code is finalized for the state of Colorado. And I'm just, you know, very nervous that there's going to be a lot coming and a lot of burden on homeowners in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Let's bring it back to council for any further questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, so I think, you know, my comment generally is, you know, I, I, I think this is an example of us being too deep in the weeds on something, right? So you know, I think we've, we've asked staff, right, to do a better job communicating this, and and we have a grant that, you know, they haven't been able to find an employee to do this work. And so, you know, we want them to to do this work, right? And and we all understand that it's important to communicate this, it's important to get a campaign out there. And so, you know, they went through a lot of, a lot of work to get to the point that we were at a couple of weeks ago, which is, you know, interviewing several people, comparing their prices, looking at what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, how they're going to cooperate with us, what their reputation is, all these things, go through and make a decision that this is who we want to go with. And so, you know, for for me, like unless, unless we're coming like, I, I don't want, I don't want them to bring three contracts and us to go over the three contracts and compare the three again, like the whole, the whole point, right, is that we rely on their expertise to have looked over all of this and and then presented the best possible option to us. And it's within the budget of that department, and it's serving the direction that we've asked them to serve. And so I don't think there's anything wrong with anything anyone said tonight. We just don't have that kind of time generally. So kind of like Dietrich earlier talking about like, we can talk about the fee we charge for patios every year. You know, we, we spent $250,000 plus to move a miner's cabin. Like, I know a guy who can do that for $10,000. So, you know, you get in those moments, you're like, why? Okay, let's, can we get line by line, like, what are, how much does it cost to lift that thing up and to move it? And well, they asked four different contractors, they got four different prices. This is the best price they could get with someone who's reputable, like, okay. So I get frustrated the same way. I look at these like, oh, my goodness, how could it cost possibly cost that much money to get that collateral or get that stuff? But I, you know, I think we could do that with every single contract we have. And and generally, I think, you know, this is, I, I, I trust the work that that's been done here. And the only thing I will speak to like directly in response to or in support of this is, you know, you put an employee in place and they have a lot of work to do, and it's going to take them a long time to get all of this together. But you hire an organization like this, and you might have five people working together all at one time, and you get 40 hours in one day, right? And as they are really going through the process. And so you get, you get the work done quicker because you're using a third party who can put more resources in. And you might be paying for their expertise and and the materials they already have or their speed of bringing things to to the forefront. So, you know, generally, I think this is incredibly important. And I just don't know what the alternative is other than approving this. Like, I can't imagine that the conversation is going to end with us saying, let's go back to the drawing board and get new new proposals, or let's offer to pay him half as much, or let's, like, what, what are we going to do tonight other than consent agenda? Yes, like, thank you for your work, right? And so I, I don't understand the, the purpose of bringing this to a full discussion of council and an hour long conversation when what else are we going to do but thumbs up or thumbs down? Right? Like, this is either the contract we're going to take or not. But the alternative, if someone's going to put an alternative of like starting over, then that's, that's really interesting to me. I would not support that. I I definitely want to move forward. I'll be supporting this tonight. I think we need to get going on this as quickly as possible, and we need to get this out as quickly as possible. And we need to, generally speaking, always worry about the cost of things and efficiencies of things and how we're doing. But I don't think this is a unique, a unique moment.
Any other comments from council members? Yes, Councilmember Currie.
Thank you. I actually do appreciate that you were listening to us and listening to the residents, that we really need help in getting this information to the broader public and really successfully. We have had a tough time, I think, doing this over the last couple of years. And I, I mean, I, I think that there's there's, the reason for the discussion, in my personal opinion, is that the, the public who is very concerned about this and wants to make sure that everyone gets the information wasn't completely understanding how we were repurposing the funds from a mitigation coordinator into this new communication role. And so I do think that this is going to be effective. I'm being hopeful, but again, that's why I would like to have the metrics. I would really implore the staff to make certain that part of what's included and it didn't, I know there was like given it just a general idea of spattering of what organizations are, but that we, that Forest Marsh absolutely interacts with some of the most invested community member groups as well as not-for-profit organizations like Marshall Together when they're doing this to get a real big understanding of the perceived communication gap.
I will say there are focus groups included in the contract, so they will be meeting with local residents.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Cooperman?
Just to maybe address a little bit Counselor Dickinson's comments. I don't know, I felt like, you know, e- even though I read the packet pretty carefully and talked to some people about it and asked staff further questions, some of the clarification, clarifications that I got tonight were helpful. So, you know, i- if I had maybe had even more time to ask questions of staff beforehand, maybe I could have clarified those beforehand, but it didn't happen. So I felt like it was useful to get some of those questions answered. And yeah, again, it, maybe it didn't need the full discussion, but for me at least, I did need more discussion than just, you know, what we had and it being on the consent agenda.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just, I, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, shining a light on the things we're doing is really important. And I think consent and agenda in general is not that, right? Like, it, it doesn't tend to shine a light. The, the reports are are briefer, the discussion is non-existent. Comments usually don't happen. So generally speaking, like to shine a light on something and help understand it, and as, as you were saying, Judy, like around, like, some people were confused at what it was or what it wasn't, or if it was replacing some or not. So I think there's a lot of value in, in shining daylight on some of these topics. So I don't, I don't, I, I don't fault you for, generally speaking, pulling it from the consent agenda and getting more information. And again, maybe that's done in a, in a, in a different way that's faster previously. And I know that, you know, that that was something you were considering. So I don't, I actually didn't mean that directly at your choice to pull this, just generally speaking that like, you know, we, we Yeah, so anyways, I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate your comments.
Councilmember Heffner?
Yeah, thanks. I, I share Councilmember Cooperman's thoughts about bringing some light onto this and just ha- having the discussion. I mean, I think it is an important topic. I think thinking bigger picture, for me, it's an example of, and I think we did this, like, outside consultants are not often the most cost effective choice for us, and we should be sparing in how we use them. And in this case, you know, we made our best effort at doing this work internally, and it didn't shake out, and the work needs to get done. And I think the mayor Protem's right that this is, this is the option in front of us. I continue to to struggle a little bit to see how the, the hours and costs in the proposal line up with the deliverables in the proposal. And it just, I mean, you can assume quite a large amount of time on each task, and it still doesn't quite seem to add up to the amount of hours they're proposing. But I think that's, you know, mitigated by the fact that it's, as the city attorney pointed out, an hourly, an hourly rate contract. And so we'll be paying for the work that's actually done. And you know, I think having this resource available to our staff is ultimately a good thing, and we need to get the work done. So, so I appreciate all the discussion and additional facts and thought it was helpful. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure there, you know, there's a more ideal way that we could have, you know, in a perfect world, done all of this, but this is the way we have. And it wasn't our first choice, but it's a choice that's going to get the job done.
Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
Just one last comment. I, I would just encourage staff to look at this item or this contract through the lens of environmental sustainability as we're looking at our work plan. You know, climate change is one of the factors that is most heightening wildfire risks. And I think it stands to educate people around that and what they can do to help.
I don't have an awful lot to add. I agree that this conversation has been helpful. We didn't have enough information to make a well-informed decision the last time. I think we do now. I appreciate staff spending time with this and hearing our concerns. And appreciate my colleagues in asking a lot of, right? I think the volume of questions speaks to the concerns that we had and the last time. And I appreciate the clarification from Mayor Protem. I, I absolutely think the, the choice of the contractor here is a great one. I think you've put a lot of effort into explaining what the other communities are that they've benefited from their work, and that is very helpful. And we've been asking for better communication. This is one of the things that we hear from the community and hear from us. This is an effort to do that. Really appreciate it in light of the fact that we don't have somebody who can be able to do that. So I applaud you from, from that standpoint. And the last point I would make is one that dovetails with Councilmember Heffner, and that is, I think it's incumbent on staff to really carefully manage the time that's being spent on these things. To the extent that something looks funky, you know, you just raise that. I, I think that that's how, my bet is that that happens. I think it's just the concerns that have been raised sort of heightened the, and I just wanted to mention that. So do we have a motion?
Yes, I will move to approve the contract with for wildfire mitigation campaign development contract with Forest Marsh.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes. It is 8:24, which is about 25 minutes past the time we usually take a break. All right. The next item on our agenda is discussion direction on Comcast cable franchise, uh, renewal. And, um, got a staff presentation who's gonna tell us just-
I know, you thought you were done.
Yeah.
She keeps coming back.
No, no, we don't. We, we love you coming back. We just gotta keep generating more things for you to do. If you could tell us the scope of this decision early, that would be good, so the viewing audience can understand how much we have in front of us.
So, um, this is really a chance for, most of you have not been through a renewal with, uh, one of our utility providers at this point, so this is a chance to give you guys a little information upfront before we start this process. Some of us have been here and done this a while, so. Um, so Comcast cable is the only source of cable television in Louisville at the moment. Um, and they operate under a non-exclusive franchise agreement that's been in effect since 2015, and it expires, I believe, this coming June. Um, the agreement allows for Comcast to use the city's rights away in return for payment of franchise fees. Uh, it's a standard process that's done pretty much nationwide. Uh, to be clear, cable franchises are non-exclusive. That means if another cable provider came to Louisville and wanted to offer the same service, we would say, yep, you can do under, under the same conditions, we allow them to do it. That has never happened. We have never had an, uh, cable provider, uh, in addition to the current one we have, come ask us to do that. Uh, and in the current environment with the lack of cable expansion, I can't say that that's likely to happen in the near future as well. Uh, you have in your packet, um, a copy of the model franchise that's used from, in the metro area. Uh, a couple items of note about that franchise. Um, due to federal regulations, the city cannot regu- we can't ask them to, we can't discuss prices with them, we can't discuss cable packaging with them. We can really much work on what to put in the right of way and some customer service standards. Uh, we can negotiate a fee for, um, like I said, the franchise fee. Currently, it's five percent of gross revenues, um, and that, that's probably what we will propose with Comcast. They could come back with something lower, and we'll have to have a conversation at that point. Um, Comcast is allowed to and typically does pass that fee on to their users. We also have a, what's called a PEG fee, which is for public education and government channels that supports Channel Eight. We get a feedback from them. It's fifty cents per customer, and that money is dedicated strictly to cable, um, costs, or sorry, capital costs for Channel Eight. So like, when we renovated this room to put in this new system, we use the money from the PEG fees for that. Um, and just to be very clear that Comcast or Xfinity, depending on their name, does also offer broadband services. This has nothing to do with that. The city has no ability under federal, federal regulations to, to deal with the broadband service levels, so. It's just for cable television. Um. Like I said, this proposed, um, model franchise has not yet been reviewed by Comcast, but we wanted to get some information, any questions from you before we move forward with that. Um, staff is proposing a ten-year franchise. Cable franchising and cable in general has changed quite a bit in the previous ten years we've done this one, so I mean, ten years, by the end of that one, they may be a whole nother service that we're looking at and not doing cable, but that would lead, our suggestion would be ten years so that we can reevaluate at that po- at that time. Um, what we're involved in now with Comcast is considered an informal franchise negotiations where we take them a suggestion, then we negotiate, and we bring it back to you for approval. Um, there is a quote-unquote "formal" cable franchise process. We would really hope to avoid that. It involves federal courts and a lot of money and a lot of lawyers. So this is the process we really hope to, to use. We have never, um, never gone down the formal franchise route, and we hope not to have to do that. As there is a model franchise that is being used by most of the metro area, we assume that, for the most part, Comcast is gonna be agreeable to that. We hope and we feel it's a good place for us to start the negotiations. So like I said, this is just an informal, um, discussion for you guys, for initial, our initial discussion for you guys, so we can answer any questions you might have. And, uh, if you can give us any direction or thoughts you might have on any of this, so.
Right, um, Councilmember questions? Yes, Councilmember Heffner.
Ju- just one question, which is, it's my understanding that the five percent is the, the maximum we're allowed to charge under federal law. That's right?
That is correct, yes.
I was curious, the, the ten-year duration, is that sort of up to negotiation, or is it?
We could ask for something different. This, it's kind of the standard right now, but we could ask for something different, yeah.
Okay, um, and then another question. Um, I mean, it, it seems like more and more people are switching away from cable. Um, so presumably the city is getting less money under that five percent.
Correct.
I don't know, how do you sort of foresee that impacting things that we've used the money for in the past?
The franchise fees themselves go into general fund. So every year when you budget, we're gonna estimate what that's gonna be, and we have been estimating down based on what we currently are getting. I, I think in the last ten years, it's gone down. Wait, I had that in here. It's down approximately sixty thousand dollars from previous years, so we just budget for it accordingly.
Thanks.
Other questions? I- in light of that, um, do you think ten years is too much?
Probably, uh, it's a good place to start. We could go less if you wanted. It might just maybe have to renegotiate earlier.
Yeah, I mean, it's more just a question. I, I, I don't have any particular expertise in the negotiation of cable contracts.
I, I know, uh, the, I, I believe the two most recent that have been approved were for, that were Golden and Boulder, I think, and I believe they were ten years.
They were ten years, okay. Um, we often, you know, we often compare ourselves to Golden on certain kinds of fiscal issues and, um, that's, that's probably useful for us to think about. Um, eh, one, one question that I know we've talked about a little bit is, um, the status of Channel Eight. And I don't know whether, um, you know, it's particularly important to have, give you guidance about that or not, but I'd like to, you know, if there's anything you can shed, uh, light on concerning the usage of, of-
Yeah, the, the usage is not huge, but there are definitely certain residents that always watch Council on Channel Eight, because we, we hear from them when it's not working. Um, we did talk about the possibility of not doing Channel Eight moving forward. It is combined, there, it's public education and government, so it's three channels combined together. Um, the education channel is what the school district broadcasts their school board meetings on, and there's some concern that if we decide to do something with our channel that would affect their channel within our boundaries, so we thought it's probably best just to leave it as is.
Other questions? Any other questions? Um. Do you feel like you have the guidance on the things that you need?
I think I'm good. I think we need to take public comment. Yes.
Yes, we do. I'm sorry about that. Um, public comment, anybody?
Bill Cardell.
Hi, thank you. Uh, I've, uh, spoken with the council a few times in the past, many years ago, when we were, the city, like all of the cities in the state, were burdened by the old statute passed by the legislature, I believe in nineteen ninety-two, that prohibited cities from providing broadband services, uh, either by the city, cities themselves, or in private public partnerships. That statute was repealed two years ago, so to the extent that your packet indicates otherwise, it's incorrect. Um, but my main purpose in speaking with you tonight about this is to point out that, uh, what consumers or residents in our town pay for services provided by the cable company are pretty high. Uh, if you compare what residents in neighboring cities can get from broadband providers that, uh, deliver their signal via fiber optic cable, they provide much higher speeds, upload and download, at much lower cost. For example, um, the information that T-Fibers provided to me indicates that I can get the same speeds and, and, uh, symmetrical upload and downloads, uh, for about forty percent less than what I'm paying to the cable company. So, uh, the other point I wanted to make is that I'd like to suggest that a ten-year renewal is too long for a cable company that shows, has shown no indication that it's ever going to provide fiber to the home or fiber to the premises in our town. Uh, I don't know if it provides that to any other town. Uh, they would, they do say in their published information that they have fiber to communities, but that for the short distance between their nodes and homes and businesses, it's still coax cable, still copper. So, it just seems to me that ten years is too long a term, uh, for an industry that's gonna change some more, a lot over the next ten years, and fiber uh, is expected to replace coax, um, in most places, and even the cable companies, uh, in the space between the backbone and their nodes uses fiber. Uh, so, I'd just like to suggest that for the benefit of residents of the town, you give us a little time to consider ways for some of the new providers to show us how much they can provide a more competitively priced service, um, uh, to everybody in Louisville, whether they're for residents or people who are teleworkers like I used to be, uh, for many years, and for businesses, especially small businesses. Be glad to try any of your questions.
Um, I, I, you and I have talked before about this, I believe.
Yep.
Um, and I, i- it's, it's actually kind of nice to have somebody who's an expert in some of these things, in addition to folks on staff to help us. Um, uh, you, you, you may not know, or maybe you do, that Intrepid, uh, is laying fiber optic cable, and in fact, at least one person on our council has hooked up to it and is receiving services, uh, from there, but, uh, do you have any suggestions as to the length?
Well, first, I'd like to point out that, that Intrepid has been the installer of the conduit. It's not an ISP.
Understood.
And I don't know which ISP you're referring to.
It's, it's T-Mobile is the one that's-
I've signed up to try them out, if, assuming they show up on Friday as promised, uh, and so that I can run my existing cable ISP alongside, uh, this fiber optic service provided by T-Fiber. So I'll let you know how it goes.
Did, did you, did you have a suggestion about the length of time we ought to be?
I think a very short time would be in order, because whatever you can, you can, uh, negotiate with the cable provider, I think is probably as far out as the town should go. Again, residents in our town and small businesses in our town are paying far more for this service to be provided by a cable company than they would pay by a modern, competitive fiber optic provider. And you can, you can, um, skip the content that's provided by the cable company if you get a stronger, higher-capacity signal from a fiber optic provider than, than you can get from a cable company. Uh, there's a reason why cable companies only serve one community at a time. Uh, I mean, in a sense, that's kind of how they go about allocating markets. I mean, I can't think of a single town where I've ever been or lived where there were more than one cable company to, uh, residents.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, any other questions for resident expert?
Actually, I was more for staff. I just wanted to clarify that this discussion is not about Comcast and internet fiber channel providing. It is solely about the cable providing that we're discussing here.
Solely about cable television. Um, if we had a, um- If we had a, it is an exclusive agreement, so another cable provider could come in separately from that, like Intrepid or another fiber carrier could come in and use our right of ways without a franchise agreement. We just do a licensing agreement for them to do that.
I'd like to point out that that's not correct. I received my ISP services from Comcast, but I don't receive any other services from Comcast.
At this point.
People should have, have a choice.
We're done with that discussion.
I, I, I just want to clarify, you can take, you might, Mr. Cardell does get his, his internet service from them, but that is not covered by this franchise. The franchise only covers cable television services.
All right, do you have the input that you need for discussion? Is there anything else from council?
Yes, I would just throw in in support of a shorter than 10 year period.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a raised hand.
Oh, good.
On.
Mr. Davis.
There we go. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi there, this, this is Andy Davis, Director of Government Affairs for Comcast. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there in person tonight, but did want to, have been listening into the discussion. And I did just want to reiterate what Meredith had said. This, this, this particular franchise, again, only has to do with the provision of a wireline video product. So it doesn't get into internet service. I appreciate Mr. Cardell's comments, but they aren't relevant to the franchise, to a video franchise. But Meredith and I will continue to sort of work through the document. And yeah, it was great to hear the questions and feedback tonight.
Thank you. Sure.
What is, like, what are the, the advantages or disadvantages? Like, why would we want to entertain less than a 10 year?
I think if technology changes sufficiently, both sides can renegotiate. Uh, I think that the benefit of 10 years is the time and effort it takes to negotiate the franchise. Quite literally, I don't think there's much advantage one way or the other, that's really what you're saving.
And it's, and when you're referencing that, it's solely just the, essentially a tax that's collected, the fee that's collected by Comcast and then paid to the city of Louisville from the subscribers, correct?
There's that, there's also a set of customer service standards that you will see that'll come forward at the same time as the franchise.
Okay, then, right, just, just for the, okay. So yeah, so it's nothing more than, it's staff time. Like, we wouldn't want to renegotiate this, but it's not like there's more or less money advantages to, okay.
We do also use, outside legal council helps with this as well, so you'd save some money there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds like, do we now have, and it sounds like we've got kind of a little bit of a consensus around perhaps trying to shorten the period reasonably. But otherwise, we trust you to negotiate. That's not, I'm sorry.
No, I asked the question, and actually I think saving the money in attorney fees when there's no plus or minus to our residents, other than it, we have to spend less of their taxpayer dollars to pay an attorney to renegotiate. A contrast would, I doubt there would be another cable company in the next 10 years maintaining the tenure that's fine with me. I don't have that consensus that it should be shortened.
I'll take that back, I misunderstood your comment, obviously. I'm going to leave it to, I mean, I think you've gotten enough input from council and you've done this before, or?
We're going to ask for.
Somebody who will.
We're going to ask for an eight and a half year franchise.
Okay, good, thank you. The final matter is what was listed as matter five C and is now eight. Excuse me, we're on to the next.
He's here to present or speak.
You can tell when the meeting has gone too far that, yeah, anyway. Thank you, Brian. We're not quite ready, I'm just going to announce what it is. Parks, Recreation, Open Space, Long Range Plan and Trails Master Plan Award. Do we have a presentation or at least some initial comments?
Thank you, Mayor, we don't have a formal presentation as this was on consent agenda, but we do have cross project manager Brian Weber here who can answer some questions. He may have some initial comments, if you'd like to share anything, please feel free to.
And since I raised this, I will start, I mean, and I just want to, let me get my page, all right, list my bullets here. Bear with me for just a second. I, I guess I had, I certainly had some concern about the limited information regarding open space. I think that we've had some public comment about that. That's one thing, I'm just going to throw these all out, you can, well, let's start with that. I'll, I'll ask him, Siri Adam, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, first of all, I'd just like to say that this project is extremely comprehensive. There's a reason why, you know, departments generally only do these plans every 10 years. And that's because it's, you know, quite a significant effort. And when we look as a department at each of our divisions, obviously there's a lot to cover in a plan like this. A lot of interest specific to each division, a lot of crossover between the two. So trying to scope a plan like this is a significant effort. And that's why, you know, we obviously worked with the three advisory boards, OSAB, PPLAB, and RAB, as well as council to get even the initial request for proposal document together that went out last fall. So, so recognizing that, you know, there's a lot to wrap your mind around in a plan like this, both for us as staff or council, for residents, and even for the consultants responding to the request for proposal. And so what was submitted today is a result of that, you know, competitive bidding process, formal interview process, follow-up interview process, series of negotiations with the consultant consulting team that we're recommending for award. But recognizing that, you know, there are questions that are emerging from the community and from council, you know, we're happy to try to fill those gaps and help connect those dots better than we did through what was submitted for tonight. And I think the most valuable thing would just be to hear, you know, what are those gaps that, and lingering questions that we can come back and address so that, you know, we can convey confidence and, and bring about confidence from you guys that, you know, we're on the right track with this investment for our department. So that being said too, we recognize that there's a lot of different strategies and approaches that you can take to try to tackle a plan like this. And there'll be a lot of different opinions on which strategies and approaches are correct or sequenced in a certain way. I think I speak for our superintendents and Director Blackmore in saying that staff are confident that we're on the right track here. And so I think it's a matter of, you know, communicating that information thoroughly to you guys so that you can share that confidence with us. So with that, I'm happy to, to, you know, take notes on any questions. We can come back to you with better answers or more sufficient information.
I've got a couple more. I, I wanted to make clear that we appreciate the effort that's gone in to this so far because I know it's a big lift. Anytime you're doing, you know, a plan that's as comprehensive as we're hoping to do here, it's, it's a lot of work and, and I don't want to minimize or otherwise cast aspersion on that. It's a big thing. I think you've gotten the, the gist that it's a matter of making sure that the public is aware, you know, this is a charter responsibility and we take that really seriously. And so that's part of it. Do you think that 17 months is too long? That looked like the start to finish was going to be 17 months. It seemed like a long time, but I, I haven't been through one of these since I've been on council. It's been a long time since we've done this as a city. So I'm interested in whether that's your opinion too.
Yeah, I think the bulk of the plan is proposed to take place in a little over a year. The 17 months kind of included the cottonwood park piece that we pulled out. I think honestly, we're a little nervous that that timeframe is aggressive. And mostly that has to do with the public engagement process that's proposed, specifically with the engagement of the various advisory boards and going to them multiple times. Obviously, meeting monthly, you know, if we miss an agenda or, you know, consultants miss a timeline or it has to, you know, slip on a timeline, we miss a meeting, we're automatically back a month. So when we look at the number of meetings that we're trying to incorporate, it's close to 30 total. And so trying to fit all those in amongst already full agendas for advisory boards and for council, I think a year is, or a little over a year is, is actually pretty aggressive. So I think that year, a year and a half is an appropriate timeframe just for the amount of public engagement that we're trying to receive and pursue through this process.
I think that's, those are my questions right now. There may be some other questions and then we'll take some public comment. Yes, council member current.
Thank you. Just a quick one, and it, and it is actually on the, the, you know, incredibly brief community engagement piece that's going to be. One of the things I'd love to make sure, because I think a lot of the early comments that we heard tonight that were topics not on the agenda around the pickleball court and the, like, the, the lack of information around that, some of that may have been helpful had residents known that they can attend board meetings where you're presenting. They can receive public comment at the board level. So the board members have more information from our residents. Maybe we can work with the communications team to notify the, the, the whole city to, that they can attend those meetings. That might be one of the ways that you'll also get a lot more bang for your buck at them that just thought they came when we heard about this and could have been discussed a year ago and wasn't. Thanks.
Other questions, yes, council member Hefner.
Yeah, thanks. Can, can you help us understand where this fits in in terms of other parks and open space planning efforts? I know there are many other plans sort of slated for the next couple of years. How, how does this fit with those?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a wide variety of, of plans we could, you know, plan all day, every day. But the general approach that we're trying to take is we use kind of an analogy of a funnel. So starting at the top of the funnel is kind of the widest, broadest approach. And as you go down the funnel, it gets, you know, tighter and more specific. So intentionally, we've tried to time the post department plan on the heels of the comprehensive plan that community development has been working on. Thinking of the comprehensive plan for the city as kind of the most broad and high level plan that the city partakes in. So that then we would fit as a department, post department underneath the comp plan, meaning that we would allow the comp plan to inform at a high level the goals and objectives of the post plan. And then the department plan could then inform any subsequent division specific plans, whether that's for open space or recreation center, golf course, et cetera. So we're kind of thinking about it like a funnel, comp plan, department plan, division plans. And that's where I think a lot of the community is looking for plans at the division level, specifically with open space, those more detailed kind of endeavors that really pertain to open space and open space properties or to the golf course and the golf course operations or maintenance. So, so we're kind of viewing it in that way from big picture down to more details and think that this is definitely at the higher level and that in subsequent years, you know, those more detailed plans could take place. And that's actually one of the purposes of a plan like this is to identify what those next steps are and help us to prioritize both time and financially which of those, you know, more specific plans we should be pursuing, which is most important, which will most inform future projects, future capital requests, et cetera.
And, and so is, I mean, is there a timeline for those future plans now?
Yes and no. So from the standpoint of the five year budget request, there are some identified already in out years specifically for open space, some different property management plans, some additional inventories. So we do have some of that, you know, penciled in and in the out years of the budget request. And then there may be others that emerge through this process. Again, you know, as a recommendation out of this high level plan, you know, others may emerge that we would incorporate into future requests. So, so we do have some that have been talked about for a while, you know, in the current CIP program for the next, through 2030, I guess.
Thank you. And then can you just sort of coming back to the open space topic? Can you give us a sense of what are the open space deliverables that are going to be part of this plan, the higher level plan?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the deliverables are fairly consistent across all divisions. And that really the, the desire is to identify a 10 year kind of list of goals and priorities and to get community input on not only what those goals and priorities are, but how to prioritize one over the other, recognizing that, you know, different people want different things. They all want it now, but we can't, you know, don't have the money or the ability to do everything now. So really prioritizing what that is, and that applies to all divisions, including open space. The other aspect of this plan is a new plan that the city has never had, and that's a trails master plan. And that has a heavy open space component to it in that our trail system obviously relies on open space properties to provide connectivity throughout the city. And that plan needs to be done very strategically, not only from a connectivity standpoint, but also for the purpose of open space with environmental impact, things like that. So that trails plan needs to be done very much in harmony with open space in mind, with environmental and, you know, open space topics in mind. So that's really kind of the, the set of deliverables consistent for all divisions is really what open space, you know, can look for is that those higher level goals and priorities.
Can you give us this, like, what's the, what's the level of detail? So are we like, is it going to say, well, you need to go do a sort of native plant management plan or whatever the, whatever the terminology is? Or is it going to say you need to do it and sort of here's, here's the parameters, here's what it should look like, here are the priority? I mean, what's the?
Yeah, I think it's the latter. I mean, and that's where we would leverage the environmental consulting team that's a part of this, that's ERO, resource consulting. They're the ones who ultimately, you know, conduct those type of plans. And so they're able to help inform what, you know, what they should, what they should be looking for, what they should be accounting for better than, than I personally know, for sure. So yeah, so I think we would be looking to leverage our, you know, team, consulting team's expertise to help guide, you know, exactly what, how prescriptive those recommendations are.
And so I think this is my last question. I mean, do you see open spaces sort of roughly half the work here? I mean, is that?
We haven't, yeah, we haven't put like a percentage priority to each division.
We reckon that, and there's a table in the original proposal that I think pegs it around 20%. And I know that's been crossed out and said, well, this, this is going to be bigger than 20%, but I mean ballpark, is it, is it 50 or is it 30?
Right, I think that's something I could come back in the subsequent, you know, talk with our consultant as to what their current kind of fee allocation is. From the chart in terms of where the accounts come from, I would need to talk to finance about how that is. My understanding is that they just, the money was previously in the parks and open space fund, which was split last year. So they did a 50 50 split. So looking at it as 50% of the money's coming from open space for this plan, that's not fully accurate. So there's, you know, something we can do with finance to help clarify where that money came from and how it's being allocated. But we can absolutely talk with our consulting team and ask them, and their hourly projections kind of, what are the percentages for each division?
Yeah, I mean, I, look, I'm not suggesting it needs to be perfectly 50 50, but I do think that conversation around splitting those funds was a pretty difficult conversation.
Right.
And there's a lot of history there and feelings that money in the combined fund went for a long time first to parks and open space got sort of the, the remainder. And certainly we wouldn't want to repeat something like that where we're taking money from both and then developing a plan that sort of first and foremost addresses parks planning and then as a sort of afterthought. And again, I know that 20% isn't the, the current proposal, but it certainly wouldn't be a. But it certainly wouldn't be appropriate to have, I think, a long-range plan that sort of put in twenty percent with, with a sub, subcontractor consultant for open space and eighty percent for parks, I think, would likely continue, um, some of the, the bad feelings around how that money's been managed over time and, and so on. And so, I mean, you know, I think I've heard others have the same concern is, um, we, we just need to make sure that we are doing something that's sort of consistent with what we heard in the most recent election where two C passed by a very large majority and, and people spoke, you know, to the importance of open space. And as I think we've all taken occasion to point out, it's not open space at the expense of parks by any stretch. But, but it's also true that we have this, this sort of difficult history around open space funding and need to be mindful of, um, i- if we're going to be pulling money out of open space to fund this plan, it, it truly needs to be an open space plan. You know, I think we've gotten some, some public comment to that effect as well. And it's just a little, it's a little difficult. And I, you know, I know we just had a long conversation about a different consultant scope of work, and I don't want to beat the source to death, but it's a little bit difficult to tell from the scope of work, like what the work actually is. And we have all these exclusions which are, you know, seem broad and are a little difficult to understand and trying to bear it out, what's, um, what's the there there and make sure, um, sort of we are, we are planning both appropriately. Because there, there was at one point a, a pretty strong interest in, well, let's separate these out and do them as separate long-range plans. And I think the compromise was, well, we'll make them one plan, but get a really good open space consultant and make sure we're keeping that promise. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember V.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say that I think the plan is, uh, very broad and effective, and I hope that everything can be accomplished. I'm wondering, is there any money from, um, like the wildfire mitigation fund that goes to the cattle grazing or something in the open space? That helps to cover the costs so that money isn't coming from the open space fund, but rather from fire suppression?
Councilmember Fahy, are you talking about the scope of the cross-long-range plan? Or are you talking about mitigation funding?
Kind of both, how they cross over and interact with each other.
So there is no mitigation funding in the scope of the long-range plan. It's a planning document, things that we are using for cattle grazing, things come out of our budget in other conversations that council has had about where to expend money.
Okay, and this, that's the same with, uh, like ditch cleaning and things?
That would be a separate budgetary conversation. It may come out of open space. I'm not saying that, but that's a separate conversation than the scope of the pros plan.
Okay, thank you.
Um, other questions? Yes, Councilmember Curran.
So, Brian, is there a component to the long-range plan? That it, like for the open space piece, that, um, maybe it's the environmental component that does focus on not just like native plant needs, but the wildfire mitigation aspect of the open space plan?
So I think this, this plan will be informed by, not only will inform future plans, but will be informed by past plans as well. So for instance, comprehensive plan as it continues to take shape. But the wildfire mitigation plan will absolutely be provided to the consulting team that's already been completed to help inform this planning effort. So, no, we don't intend to, you know, duplicate the effort that was already done in that plan, but rather use that to inform, uh, future decisions.
And I, I think we mean the wildfire risk assessment, the WRA.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, so, um, that, the inform, the risk assessment will be available for them to like, like read or what have you. How is that being incorporated then? I mean, wouldn't part of the long-range plan for open space be to help mitigate against wildfires and what that would mean for the environment? What that would mean for the cost of maintenance of trails or the animals that are out there? I, I'm curious if it's, if they're just reading it, are they, are they also using it to help us formulate a better open space plan than what we, like if they see that there's gaps and it's pointed out to us quite extensively that there are? Is that part of this or, or it is? Okay, so that will come from this.
Yeah, so I could absolutely foresee be wildfire mitigation being one of the key goals, priorities, objectives, uh, for both parks and open space. So yeah, and I think to like the specific topics that will be addressed, I think that really is where this, the public input process starts to inform those. So through, you know, early survey, early open house, what are these topics that our community, you know, thinks are the most important for us to be pursuing? And then pursue those, you know, goals and recommendations for those topics. So this scope is to kind of gather that input of what the topic should be and then make those recommendations. But it doesn't outline for parks, we're going to talk about topic A, B, and C. For open space, A, B, and C, it's, we're going to engage the community in discovering what topics A, B, and C are for Louisville over the next ten years relative to each division.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, first I would just echo pretty much everything that Counselor Huffner said. I have one little follow-up question. Um, so none of the money allocated for paying for the consultant is from the recreation fund. I'm just curious about why that is the case.
Yeah, I think I would need to talk with finance about the background of where this money came from. I know it's been rolling over through a couple budgets, and I think it actually predates, uh, my beginning employment with the city. So where it actually emerged, you know, came from originally, I would need to check on the history of that and kind of report back to help connect those dots. I just know that last year when they split the Parks and Open Space Fund, they just took the pot of money and divided it fifty-fifty. But you're absolutely correct in that a portion of this funding is going for consulting time on the golf course and for, uh, the recreation and senior center. And so I think back to, uh, Councilmember Huffner's point about kind of what are those projected percentages? That'd be an interesting exercise to ask our consultant, because you're right, it's, it's a little, um, misleading to say that open space is paying for half the plan, but they're paying for consulting at the rec center and parks is doing the same, when really it's department funds, they just happen to be in these two accounts currently. So I think we can offer some more background and explanation of that through conversation with finance.
Thanks.
Other questions? I have a couple of follow-up questions. I, one of the things that concerns me is the exclusions. I mean, for example, uh, this is just one small one. I don't want to nitpick this, but I just, to give you a sense of what concerns me, uh, yes, there's going to be public input to decide, you know, some things that are important, but, um, you know, things like native prairie restoration plans, I mean, that's, um, isn't that an important piece of, of what, uh, uh, this kind of plan ultimately needs to discuss? That's one of the exclusions. I, and I'm, we're, I'm a little concerned that for the money, you know, a whole bunch of things are going to get excluded. It may be, thank you for raising that, but we're not going to deal with that. And I would hate, I guess, I'd hate to think that some of the issues that, that are really important to include on this, which you're the expert on and, and there are people in our community who are very interested in that, just somehow get the, you know, talk to the hand.
Right. Yeah, and I think that pertains to some very specific language. So in the kind of environmental consulting field, a restoration plan or a property management plan refers to a specific set of services and deliverables that's at a very kind of finite level. And so I think what the consultant is, well, I know, what the consultant is trying to do is be very clear about the level of detail that they're engaging us in and the level of detail that they're not, um, knowing that that more detailed level of service and, and deliverable comes at a much higher cost, you know, amount of hours to complete. So when we look at, you know, something like a native, whi- which one did you say specifically native?
Uh, native prairie restoration.
Native prairie restoration plan, right? That that would be looking very detailed at the ecosystem in the prairie, making recommendations on specific seed types, uh, weed management, et cetera, for that specific property. Whereas the purpose of this plan might be to identify, you know, X, Y, and Z properties are struggling with weed management and we need to pursue, you know, engage a consultant in developing a property-specific recommendation for that. So I think what they're, what they're trying to do is just kind of cover their bases so that we don't come back to them and say, we expected this plan that would cost five hundred thousand dollars for you to complete, and we just assumed it was going to be a part of this whole exercise, you know? So in, and specifically on the environmental or kind of open space-related topics, that terminology is really key in identifying what those things are, because it means very specific things to folks in that industry. And knowing that there's the potential for all that work in the future. I think the consultant wanted to draw that line very clearly. But yes, it, it stands out to us as well, and we anticipated that it was going to be, uh, scrutinized.
I, I guess the, the final question is that my understanding and maybe, uh, if I'm wrong about this, let me know, is that a subcontractor on, on, um, open space was, um, was it changed? I mean, is ERO, I guess, is the, is that the name of the new one? I mean, one of the challenges for us, and it, it's a, it's a transparency issue too, so that the public knows and can be comfortable that, um, you know, that's, we have no information on that particular piece. And again, it's not a matter of second guessing you necessarily. It's just a matter of making sure that we're comfortable with the amount of money that we're spending, that open space is going to get solid work when it appears that maybe the first, you know, cut on this was not quite there yet, that we've got it, somebody else that's been reviewed and vetted and that's, that's great. I don't know if it's vetted by you all or vetted by others. Did, at, what role did the, did you or, you know, the folks in the, the city have in changing to that other or, or in pushing them to, to substitute consultants?
Yeah, absolutely. So I would say that all of the, um, respondents to the RFP put together teams of consultants and provided a response based on their interpretation of RF, of our RFP. So they read it, they digested it, they thought, you know, they made assumptions, they made, um, conclusions based on their own thinking, put together a team and a proposal for us to review. Um, so what became apparent during the review process and during the interview process was that the original environmental consultant that DTJ was proposing had a very specific, um, kind of history and skillset specifically with fire. Um, and so DTJ kind of made an assumption that this team would be a good fit for Louisville based on history with fire and specifically with fire mitigation, fire risk assessment, that type of thing. However, we felt like through the interview process that that consultant was perhaps too narrowly focused on specifically on fire at the expense of numerous other environmental topics, um, ecological topics, hydrology, et cetera, et cetera. Not to say that they didn't have that experience, but they were brought to the table initially because of a very strong background with fire. Given the fact that we had just completed the risk assessment, we said, well, we don't really need an expert on that at the expense of all these other topics. So we would like to, you know, pursue a cons, uh, environmental consultant that perhaps is more well-rounded, you know, across the board of topics that'll impact specifically open space, not just the fire string. And so, um, so we held, uh, subsequent interviews, conversations, involved, uh, the open space management team, so our superintendent, as well as manager and natural resource staff on that interview with the original consultant and said, do you think that they bring enough to the table to continue? And the sentiment was, no, we would prefer a group that we know is more well-rounded, uh, that we know is, you know, very versed in these topics, that has experience on the ground in Louisville in the past. And then also looking at DTJ as a consultant, one of their most recent projects that we were looking to as precedent was the City of Broomfield's plan. And so DTJ partnered with ERO on the City of Broomfield's plan. So we knew that they had worked together in the past, that there was, you know, a relationship there. And again, DTJ originally brought a different consultant to the table, thinking that we wanted this heavy fire focus. And we said, no, we actually want this more well-rounded focus. And they said, okay, this is a tough conversation to have, but if this is what, you know, you need as our client, then we'll, you know, pursue ERO. The other aspect of that conversation was, uh, in reviewing their proposal, again, that they're making assumptions as to, you know, what different team members need to be involved with. We said, the environmental consultant absolutely needs to be involved in the trails plan as well, and they need to be involved throughout. And so when they came back to us with ERO, we saw a fee increase. One, it was a more expensive firm. Two, there was a lot more consulting hours that they were using, you know, allocating to that subconsultant. So that's where that shift happened with Cottonwood Park, where eventually it fell out. So, so yeah, absolutely, staff were driving that conversation with DTJ and involved in making that recommendation based on past experience specifically with ERO and with DTJ's past experience with ERO, um, and feeling confident that they were the right team member to bring to the table, um, despite the increased, um, costs associated.
Is, uh, the, going the other direction, I mean, is the, that ERO, do, do they have sufficient expertise in fire mitigation to be able to keep, I mean, it's, is it an either-or?
I don't believe so. I would need to follow up on verifying that they have that. Um, I would say personally, I was going on open space management's perspective and, you know, their general impression of the firm and knowledge of the firm. But absolutely, we can follow up with that and speak specifically to their fire experience that ERO does or does not have.
We take public comment.
Catherine Smith.
And thank you very much for your patience and your patience, Brian, as well as Miss Smith's patience.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Smith in Ward Three. Um, I wanted to thank Brian for taking time earlier in the week to talk to me and explain some things to me. I want to thank all of you for engaging on this issue and say that I appreciate, um, all of your comments, but, uh, Councilman Hefner is in particular. Um, with regard to ERO, I wanted to clarify that our objection is not to the selection of the contractor, but goes more towards the documentation, that what we're looking for is a contract that identifies, uh, who will be doing the environmental work and just to make sure that everybody understands that it really is ERO and we're not going to be looking at a substitution, um, at another time. I think, I, 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 I guess I listened to tonight's conversation and was trying to sort out in my mind was the materials that are part of your package just pulled together really quickly. And honestly, when I kind of cut and pasted the exclusions, I thought this kind of reads like they were in a rush and didn't necessarily have the time to give it the thought that it needed. Or are we really not quite sure what we're doing with regard to open space? Um, I, I wanted to highlight something that again comes out of tonight's conversation, which is that when we think about open space and the city charter, I think do we have to be careful when we survey the residents? Because the city charter is setting out- is setting out what the management goals are for open space. And we have less leeway about what we do with our open space than we do with, say, parks. So I want to see something that's science driven and complies with the city charter. And that's what I'm going to continue to advocate for. Another thing that I just wonder, and again, it it isn't clear to me as I look at the materials that we have here, is this high level plan that we're going to get back any different from what our staff already know? I have met several of the people who work in the open space, and they are trained in the fields. They're very knowledgeable. And and I just feel like this is a lot of money to be spending, and and I want us to spend it in the best way possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. Public comment? No. Okay, why don't we take it back to council? Further discussion? Yes, councillor Hefner.
Yeah, I'll just say I I thought the public comment was I I'm very sympathetic to everything that was said, and it I I am struggling with the scope of work for a $400,000 contract as well. And and the exclusions, which I know you mentioned mayor and some of the some of the listed items, which I do think are like, I mean, I think we have a prioritization of open space acquisitions, right? We have a we have a great advisory board that's given that to us. We have stuff in here like we're going to do cost recovery goals for programs, but not detailed cost recovery financial plans. So what what does that mean? Like, we're going to say, well, we should recover some some cost. It would be great if we recovered some costs from these programs. I I agree, but I don't know if we need a consultant to tell us that. So we're, I think we probably have the right set of consultants here with the swap out for E R O. And I think we do need this plan. I mean, the plan is badly in need of an update. But it doesn't feel to me like the the proposal we have here quite parks it. And I I do want to be sensitive to the mayor pro tem's concern earlier about sort of micromanaging and nitpicking and and getting involved in the details of something we we correctly delegated to staff. But I I do think, given that this is a a long range plan, that's going to be in place for quite a long time. There may be some merit to add minimum, sort of bringing it back with a full proposal that isn't. I mean, I know it's not in our packet, but that the seven of us received today, sort of a revised proposal with stuff crossed out and notes on it. And it's not going to be this consultant, it's going to be the other consultant and so on. And maybe just getting back a full proposal for purposes of transparency, for purposes of having a, you know, a complete council and public consideration of whether this is the right plan. And, you know, I would hope as part of that, we can get a little bit more detail in the scope of work about what's what's going to be done here. $100,000 is is not an insignificant amount of money for the city. And, you know, again, I want to make sure we're spending our consultant dollars wisely. And if we're going to have a a plan that guides us for a decade, that it's it's done as thoughtfully as as possible. And I do think getting the details right at the beginning is important.
Councillmember Cooperman.
To to follow up on those comments just a little bit, I'm wondering if I think it might be useful, Brian, if you could speak to Catherine Smith's question about like, what is this plan going to get us beyond the knowledge that staff and our advisory boards already provide us?
So I think one of the fundamental components of this, and that's driving timeline, the cost, is the public engagement process, and that's really the backbone of completing this plan. So I think there are a lot of ideas floating out there. We're never short on ideas of projects or improvements or needs. We're certainly well aware of, you know, like I said, more than we can accomplish in any given fiscal year or, you know, time year as far as staff go. But I think the biggest thing is that community input process and recognizing that Louisville is 20,000 people. And that we want to hear from as many of those people as possible on these topics that impact our whole community. And so allowing the community's voice to drive the priorities and the goals, I think, is is really important because we're constantly hearing from one side or the other on every single project that we do. And so we can really, you know, get blown back and forth on any given day as to what we think is the most important based on, you know, who the loudest voice is that day, right? Who's at the top of our inbox? And so when we look at a 10 year plan, we really want to know that it's grounded in that collective community's desire. And so and use that to inform our decision making so that when people have questions, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? Why are you not doing? That we have this plan as that kind of solid foundation to look for so that we're not blowing about in the wind on any given day. So so, yeah, to that extent, there are absolutely going to be goals and recommendations, I think, that are in this plan that are known. Even when we look at the trails planning, I don't think we're going to necessarily come up with anything revolutionary, even for like a new trail corridor. We've been talking about this stuff for years and years, long before I was here. But I think it's really about bringing together all of those ideas in a cohesive document for each division and really building off of that backbone of community engagement so that we have informed decision making, you know, for the long term for our department.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Other comments? You know, the only comment I'd add is is I appreciate Smith's comment about the fact that we are dealing within a, you know, we've got a framework that's somewhat limited. So by the charter, and that's different than, say, our comprehensive plan that we're going through right now. And I think to the extent that we can we can make sure we're not that people people are we're not asking for things in the public engagement piece that are just blue sky issues because that's not really what we're dealing with. So I I think that's part of this. The hope is, you know, that we be properly narrow so that you could do a plan and get the plan done. Because we need the plan, no question. And at some point, some of this is going to end up being, you know, potentially more expansive than needs to be. But anyhow, I'll leave that at that. I think the question that I've heard from at least councillor Hefner is, you know, I would I would frame it as, are we ready to make a decision on this agreement tonight? And or do we need to send it back for further refinement in light of the comments that have been made? Yes, councillor Kern.
Thank you. I think that the at a minimum, the financial allocation piece of this should be clarified so that we do understand, we did break apart Parks and Open Space with the funding, with the the sources of the funding and the rec. And I think getting a better understanding of how that can be done, having Director Bailey involved, that would be, or maybe he just could, you know, brings this up at the finance meeting. That would be helpful so that we can understand that that's really going to be processed and done. Maybe like I think putting out a whole new version, like an updated version that is more has more accuracy, and then it just goes on a consent agenda. So we can all see it, the public can see it. And then it can be here at the next meeting. It doesn't take a whole huge scheduling. I would I could be in favor with that because it doesn't put that anybody in Parks and Rec too far behind. But it gets all of the the good compiled data out there for everyone to look at.
Other comments? Does that sound?
That that approach works for me.
Okay. All right, then. I think we're not going to make a decision on that tonight. And I don't know when we would be next able to get it on consent. I think that's a great idea. But I don't know how fast the pros can do the work necessary to get it to that point. So maybe that's something that we need to get more staff input and.
I believe if legal is comfortable with it, we can confirm what time, I'm sorry. We can confirm the time the staff needs to pull this together and put it on the earliest possible meeting date. We'd be targeting April 1st or 15th, depending on staff capacity.
And I don't think there's any need for a vote as long as we comfortable with that course of action. Okay, I think we've got a direction. Yes, councillor Cooperman.
I just wanted to make one little comment. In the packet, I would have found it useful just for it to state like OSAB reviewed this, RAB reviewed this, P Lab reviewed this. And maybe also just reference like, because I I didn't necessarily remember like, you know, that some of the initial scoping had come to council, maybe before I was on council. And sometimes that's in the packet, but it's not always there. And in this case, that would have been quite helpful.
Okay, good. Let's move on. Do we have a city attorney's report tonight?
Thank you, mayor. I have no report.
Identification of future agenda items. Yes, councillor Kern.
Do you want me to defer? I think we're doing the same thing. So I think in light of not just all of the public comment that we've received in email, but with the outpour from the community, I think that looking at the taking a closer look, having come back to council for a closer look at converting the inline skate rink to the five pickleball courts is worth further discussion and engagement if anyone else is willing to do that.
Good discussion about the merits, but.
No, I'm on board with that.
Okay, councillor's thumbs up, thumbs down. Milking. Okay, there's a consensus, I think, to put it on at some point. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.